I wonder if everyone could take their seats. We're gonna start in just a couple, just a, well, ten seconds. Okay. I'm gonna call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Mathie. Alderman Seig.
Here.
Alderman Malumay.
Here.
Alderman Burgess.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Harmon.
Here.
Alderman Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Thank you very much. And this point, we're gonna start with proclamations and appointments. The first is a proclamation declaring June 2017 as Amateur Radio Month. Is there someone here to accept that? Would you please come forward? And what's your name, sir?
Dennis Mills.
Dennis? Right. Proclamation, whereas amateur radio has historically played a significant role in developing worldwide radio communications, and whereas amateur radio operators are instrumental in serving the United States of America and the state of Illinois consistently providing behind-the-scenes support for emergency response and other critical needs, whereas amateur radio provides excellent volunteer emergency communications for agencies including the National Weather Service, Illinois Emergency Management Agency, Illinois Department of Public Health, the American Red Cross, the Salvation Army, Central United States Earthquake Consortium, and others in times of natural disasters and other emergencies, whereas Illinois has more than 20,000 amateur radio operators who repeatedly donate their time, equipment, and services to help their communities, and whereas by continuous learning and experimentation, amateur radio operators help to forward the science of electronics and radio-related communications, and whereas by example teaching and practical experience, including the opportunity to communicate with amateurs in space, amateur radio operators teach young people the opportunities available in radio and electronics, and whereas Illinois radio amateurs will continue to hone their communication skills by operating during the simulated emergency preparedness exercise known as Field Day on June 24th to 25th, 2017. Now therefore, I, Terry Renner, Mayor of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2017 as Amateur Radio Month in Bloomington and encourage all citizens to join me in this worthy observance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the city, I say thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Awesome. And in a related move here, we have a proclamation for Drew Reba. And Drew, I know you're here, I saw you. Would you please come forward? You can come on up here, so. I wanna be right there to shake your hand, okay? Recognition of Drew Reba, whereas we are here to celebrate the achievements of Drew Reba, and whereas Drew received the 2017 Young Achievers Award for the second time from the Radio Club of America, and whereas Drew was one among eight students selected for the Dayton International Ham Radio Youth Forum in 2017, held on Saturday, May 20th, 2017, and whereas Drew's presentation was on community services with radio communication and promotion ham radio, and whereas Drew has been recognized as the youngest amateur ham radio operator of Indian origin in the world, right here in Bloomington. And whereas the city of Bloomington wishes to honor Drew for his accomplishments, now I therefore, Terry Renner, Mayor of the city of Bloomington, urge all citizens in our community to recognize the outstanding achievements of Drew, who in distinguishing himself, has brought honor and credit to his family, his friends, and his community. Congratulations, Drew. Next, we have a series of awards here to people who are participating in Bloomington 101. And let me start by thanking Nora Dukowitz, who has been, in a sense, the president, the provost, the dean, and the professor of Bloomington 101 for all this and orchestrating this and putting this all together. Thank you, Nora. And when I call your name, if you would please come forward and receive your plaque. Well, actually, it's not plaque, it's certificate, excuse me. Budget cuts. Okay. First, we have Tom Dirks. Tom? Tom's not here. Ralph Dingus. And Mary. No? Okay. Shelley Joe Garland. Thanks for participating. Sure. Joy Hefner. Joy? Thank you, former neighbor and conspicuous spouse. Charles Jurgis. Charles? Sean? Not here? Oh, there he is. Congratulations. Thanks. Awesome. John Lamara. Brett Joseph Litwiler? Congratulations. Nancy Marcinia. Nancy? Tyson Moore? Lori Moore? John Quinn? John? We can give a round of applause anyway. Neil, and I apologize in advance, I'm probably gonna butcher your last name. Raffinach?
Yeah, not bad.
Not bad? Okay. So, carving rather than butchering?
No, you did a good job.
Okay. Thanks. Next, Cindy Schrantz. Cindy? Lynn Springston? Lynn? Wendell Springston?
For those of you who don't know, this is a great forum.
Your check's in the mail, one. Okay. I know I'm gonna mess this one up, I apologize. Satish Venkata Chalopathy. Matt Vose? Aubrey Wagner? Aubrey? We'll give her a round of applause. Billy Walden Jr.? Matt Wachinski? Thanks. Great. Thank you. All right. And then we next have recognitions of people who are being, one appointed, two reappointed. Appointment of Ellen Schroeder Conklin to the Board of Police, or, excuse me, Fire and Police Commissioners. Ellen, are you here? Thank you. And reappointment of Gannett Hoskins to the Bloomington Housing Authority. Gannett, are you here? And someone who's not here is reappointment of Jamie Matthews to the Cultural District Commission, and just FYI, you can be on the council and serve on the cultural district. But we can give Jamie a round of applause. Okay. Now, we have an unusual number of people requesting public comment. Once I start the time, we have a half an hour. You have up to three minutes individually. I would, since there are so many people, I'm gonna read them in groups of three. If you'd be prepared to come up, so we can get as many people as possible to come up and give their thoughts. And just to clarify, if you want specific answers to specific questions, we have a mayor's open house, was just here last Friday, 4:30 to 5:30. We can get you answers in real time, sometimes, or try to solve problems in real time. Our policy here is not to engage in back-and-forth, no matter what the situation is, so this is more of sort of open mic in terms of opinions. Those of you who might be here for, and I know that there are at least a few of you, 'cause a few of you came to my open house last Friday, the bicycle lanes, the planning commission has yet to act, the planning, we're not acting on anything that's not our agenda tonight. The planning commission is going to hold their hearing on Wednesday, I believe, and then at some later point, it would come to the city council. That doesn't mean that you can't speak out today, it just means just so that we clarify that in advance. And again, we're gonna go ahead and start the time at 7:13, and again, you have up to three minutes. If you don't use it all, please step down so that someone else has a chance. And the first is, I think it's Stephanie Michaelis? I'm not sure, is it Stephanie or Stephanie? Michaelis? And then Elizabeth Graver? And Teresa Enyer? Come on forward. Thanks. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that.
That's fine. So, I'm Stephanie Michaelis, president of Bike Blono, but tonight, I'm here as a resident of Demet's Grove and a person with a deep respect for science as a sociologist by training. Two years ago, I came before you to urge you to adopt the Bloomington Bike Master Plan. That plan took into consideration the comments and concerns of thousands of members of this community, as well as the strong data in support of creating a bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. Now, as we begin to consider amending that plan to be more based on public desire to include Washington Street as a main bicycle thoroughfare, I urge you to recall the data and the feedback that we have previously reviewed. Remember that narrowing lanes slows traffic. This is based on solid science. In fact, research shows that riding an adjacent sidewalk can be 25 times more dangerous than riding on a street with no infrastructure, so infrastructure improves safety. A 2013 study found that bike lanes reduced bicycle-related injuries by 75% when compared to similar crossings with no infrastructure. These improvements also benefit pedestrians, many of whom are children, in that they remove cyclists from the sidewalks and slow traffic overall. Again, I'm here as a resident of Demet's Grove as well, right next door to us here. I had the pleasure to use the pop-up lane several times, and I can tell you firsthand that I saw these benefits myself. The thing that the research cannot tell you, though, is the personal sense of safety that I felt greatly increased while riding on these streets. I saw that traffic was slowed, I saw that cars did respect that lane while I was riding in that lane, and I think I used the lane about five times, with groups and by myself, that week. So as a cyclist, I can tell you that, you know, it really did improve things on that stretch of road. It was a lovely way to enjoy our historic neighborhoods while out and about on my usual errands. So in closing, moving forward, I urge you to consider the research and facts, to reach out to those in the communities such as us with Bike Blono, who can point you to further reading if you need it, and if you'd like it, we can point you to all the data, I'm sure many of you have already researched it even, or we can even lend a bike and a helmet to take you out to see our wonderful community by bike. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Grover, and then Teresa Enyer, and I think it's, is it Sid Williams? Elizabeth?
Yeah. I'm basically here to represent those taxpayers who would not like to see any funds expended on bike paths. This is another case of asking all of the taxpayers, and I'm talking thousands, to fund a project for a small number of citizens. Bloomington's streets were not designed to take up footage for paths. I spent part of the winter in Florida, and that is covered in bike paths. Do you see cars on those paths, I mean, bikes on those paths? No, because they know how dangerous it is. My neighbor was just killed a couple months ago when a car made a right turn, he collided with it, and he died on impact. So I don't think the paths are something that you should be looking at. I see more important issues before this council. Empty buses losing close to $1 million a month with connect transit, the Coliseum losing money, empty fire station, non-functioning water tower, bad roads, bad sewers. I would like to see the council focus on issues affecting all the citizens instead of picking and choosing popular Agenda 21 issues.
Teresa Enyer, Sid Williams, and Donnie Bowns.
I began informing my neighbors on my own. I noticed the open houses weren't full of neighbors from Washington Street. I know that a lot of comments were taken from the FDNA meetings. Our neighbors on Washington Street probably have three, maybe four neighbors that are impacted on that road where the lines were chalked that participate in FDNA. FDNA is not for everyone in the neighborhood, except you choose. The families on Washington Street put just as much time, energy, and generosity in the community as you do sitting on city council. I knocked on 32 doors, then neighbors started coming to me on their own. To date, we have 41 signatures. Only two of the neighbors on Washington Street did not care to sign the petition of opposition for the bike paths. Two could care less. We have the Knapp family, the Phoenix family, real estate owners, people that contribute to the community, doctors, lawyers, that are all just, you know, kinda saying, hey, what are we doing? What are, you know, what are we doing? Why are we adding these bike paths? And a lot of these people on Washington Street have all been there since before even me or you were born, I guess you. Concerns.
These are millennials.
Concerns range from traffic safety of the children, safety of our family, driveway issues. Bottom line is, just please consider redirecting the funding that we would use for these bike paths elsewhere, like improving our roadways, improving our curbs, giving the money to a park on the west side for the kids, or even Washington School Park. We did listen, we did go out and meet with a few Blono bikers ourselves that I actually invited to my home and said, hey, you know, listen to us, tell us, you know, if you think we're crazy, tell us, tell us, you know, your side of it. And it was interesting, and I mean, they understood our side of it, too. We also read the bike plan, all the neighbors got a copy of the bike plan that said, you know, it was based off 90 individuals for our town, if I read that correctly. The families on East Washington Street are not anti-bike, we just do not believe this is the best road for additional movement and congestion. Current state, cars do not slow down for our children or back in, or for us to back out of our driveways. Why would they for, why would they slow down for a bike, is my question. Also, and speaking to our neighbor here, she also told me, you know, it wouldn't be used by her or her family, so why would we wanna put us or our families on it if our own alderman's telling us that she doesn't want part of it? To close, I would also like to thank and acknowledge Mr. Renner here for understanding the behaviors that, you know, I've kind of incurred through this all-of-a-sudden mommy talking about bike paths. But one thing I do wanna say is, elected officials, you set the tone for what's acceptable behavior in our community, whether or not you like it, you guys really do. And we look to you to ensure the leaders in our community, our leaders, are not unethical intimidators, because that's what I've been experiencing with some of this bike club stuff. Thank you.
Thanks. Again, I believe it's Sid Williams, Donnie Bowns, and Diane Hollister.
Hi, my name is Sidney Williams. I've lived in an eight-block radius all my 56 years. Growing up on Grove Street, I lived on Olive Street, I lived on Oakland Avenue, and now I finally reside on Washington Street, where I've lived for 22 years. It's a busy street, and I have problems backing in and out. My neighbor's got six kids and six cars coming and going all the time. You know, we have to make a three-point turn so we can actually pull out the drive right now. We look both ways, but we still have so much to watch for, you know, kids, now we gotta look for bikes, you know, it's kinda like paying froggy, you know, going out there to get your vehicle going. I also don't like the cost and the expense that it's gonna incur. I think that money could be used other ways. And we're really representing a small amount of people here that want this bike path done, and I think that for that small percentage, it shouldn't have to take over that all these people on Washington Street who are opposed to it, because we've gone and done a map, a little survey of whose house wants it and whose house doesn't, and we've only got like two positives in that stretch from Chrysler to Mercer. We've got still a few unanswered ones yet, but there's not, there's not a wantless thing to happen. You know, if you wanna ride a bike, ride a bike. Ride on the sidewalk, we don't care, but, you know, to put another bike out in that traffic, we've got service vehicles that stop out, lawn mowing services that stop out there, and by the time you put two bike lanes, you know, one on either side, and you're throwing these middle cars together, I think we're gonna have more accidents in the long run with vehicles, not so much the bikes, but the vehicles being pushed closer together. It's basically a two-lane with a one-lane parking, and now we're making it into a three-lane, everybody goes this way and that way. And it's just too much to watch. I think it's a too-busy street already, and when I was told when I was a kid, my mom said, stay off the busy streets with your bike. And we knew which one that was, and it was Washington Street. It's not any less busy today than it was 40 years ago. That's it.
Thank you. Again, Donnie Bowns, Diane Hollister, and John Hollister.
Hi, I'm Donnie Bowns, I live on Washington Street, I've been there for 13 years, and as everybody has continually mentioned, it's a very busy street, and for all 13 years, it seems like every year continues to get busier and busier. I have sat in my driveway for sometimes up to 45 minutes to a minute in order for me to even pull my car out, there's so much traffic there in the morning with, I'm assuming it's State Farm employees going towards down Washington. But one thing I do like to mention is, I am an avid cyclist, I'm not part of Bike Blono, but I bike around 100 miles a week, and I don't, I do not do it on Washington Street, 'cause I've been almost hit three times going from my house down to the trail, just that short little distance. The busiest and worst corner was Tuanda in Washington and Mercer in Washington, because those intersections just kinda all come together and it's very, very dangerous. So, as we continue to mention, it is quite a safety problem. The other thing I'd like to mention is, the first speaker talked about a thousand, thousands of people that have surveyed. My recollection is, and based upon their website, it was approximately 100 people that were surveyed. Of those 100 people, 25 people wanted a trail from Tuanda to Mercer. A total of 82 people wanted a trail from Brown to Oak, Oak to Center, Center to Clayton, and Clayton to Tuanda. That information is available. So I'm not sure why we're concentrating in an area that is considerably very dangerous for bicyclists, and not on an area that I think the community in that area, more from the west side to the downtown area towards Tuanda there, would benefit from this bike trail more than Washington Street. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Diane Hollister, John Hollister, and Larry Enyer.
I'm Diane Hollister, and I'm a retired librarian. I moved to Bloomington in 2012 after I retired. We looked for a house, and we were fortunate enough to find a Pillsbury House in the Briarwood area. We fell in love with the house, we fell in love with the neighborhood. It is like a slice of the 1920s, 30s, and 40s and 50s. It's just, it's delightful, quaint, charming, I can't say enough about the area. And I do love Bloomington very, very much. My home, I wish I had been born here, seriously. Why I'm here today, it's because I'm imploring and asking you from the bottom of my heart, I would like a reversal of the denial for an extension on our garage to be built into like a library, reading area. Now it's commonly known as a she-shed in the 19, in this time, in 19, in 2015, 16, they're very popular now, and I apologize for my nervousness. My passions are still reading, even though I'm retired. I was, I used to teach, I still work at Bradley, I'm a librarian there, part-time. I worked with children at Peoria Public, I was a youth services librarian, I worked with firefighters, so I have a lot of antiques, memorabilia, and books, books, books. We have a little free library in our house, in front of our house. I think that having this library, my she-shed, would enhance the neighborhood very much. We have a quaint little gazebo that's out in front of our house that belongs to the city, and I think that just the whole surrounding neighborhood, with the little Pillsbury that's across the way, it just, it adds so much. When we have made any renovations, we make it so obnoxious that you can't tell anything has been done. Our upkeep is reflective in how our house looks from the exterior, it's lovely. And again, I believe that the library, my she-shed, would be reflective of our times, to dovetail with the beauty of our house, Pillsbury craft in mind, and not to cause a dissonance, but to echo harmoniously with today. And for people who occupy our house when John and I are gone, I think it'll be a lovely addition. I believe that Pillsbury would have loved and approved the she-sheds also. So I do urge you to vote in our favor to reverse the decision. Our neighbors have all stopped to put in their encouragement for us to continue to fight to have this, fight to ask politely for a reversal. And sometimes it's necessary to give people a break, 'cause oftentimes it makes all the difference in the world for quality of life and enhancement.
I'm sorry, Diane, I have to cut you off. Thanks. John Hollister, Larry Enyer, and Amy Harvey.
My wife gave a pretty good pitch. I'd just like to refute some of the things that the Board of Appeals mentioned in their denial. We're not putting up a pole barn back there. The addition we planned is designed by an architect, it's gonna be probably 100 feet back from the street, it's not sticking out in anybody's face. We have a corner lot, we think that the additional size to this accessory structure is, would fit in with our lot, it's not like we're building on a smaller lot. Like Diane said, a notice was sent to everybody, the other homeowners within 500 feet, a few of them came over to ask what was going on, there wasn't a single person in opposition. In fact, some people thought it was a great idea, including our next-door neighbor. One man even offered to write a letter in favor of it. One of their points is that granting the variance would be detrimental to the essential character of the neighborhood. We've already pretty much addressed this, we think it would be a fine structure, we think it would be, actually be an asset to the neighborhood, so, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Again, Larry Enyer, Amy Harvey, and Nancy Marcinia.
Hello, I'm Larry Enyer, I live on, in the 1300 block of East Washington Street, and basically, everything can pretty much be summed up in that, in the thing that my wife did, got out, went out and got the, all the signatures and everybody opposed, everybody that's opposed out there on Washington Street, and I think that sums it up right there, that we really don't want it there. And most of the reasons come back down to safety, from our point of view, and that is from backing in and out of driveways.
I believe that Pillsbury would have loved and approved the she sheds also. So, I do urge you to vote in our favor to reverse the decision. Our neighbors have all stopped to put in their encouragement for us to continue to fight to have this, fight to ask politely for a reversal. And sometimes it's necessary to give people a break, because oftentimes it makes all the difference in the world for the quality of life and enhancement.
I'm sorry, Diane, I have to cut you off. Thanks. John Hollister, Larry Enyer, and Amy Harvey.
My wife gave a pretty good pitch. I'd just like to refute some of the things that the Board of Appeals mentioned in their denial. We're not putting up a pole barn back there. The addition we planned is designed by an architect. It's going to be probably 100 feet back from the street. It's not sticking out in anybody's face. We have a corner lot. We think that the additional size to this accessory structure is, would fit in with our lot. It's not like we're building on a smaller lot. Like Diane said, a notice was sent to everybody, the other homeowners within 500 feet. A few of them came over to ask what was going on. There wasn't a single person in opposition. In fact, some people thought it was a great idea, including our next-door neighbor. One man even offered to write a letter in favor of it. One of their points is that granting the variance would be detrimental to the essential character of the neighborhood. We've already pretty much addressed this. We think it would be a fine structure. We think it would be, actually be an asset to the neighborhood. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Again, Larry Enyer, Amy Harvey, and Nancy Marceniac.
Hello, I'm Larry Enyer. I live on, in the 1300 block of East Washington Street, and basically, everything can pretty much be summed up in that, in the thing that my wife did, got out, went out and got the, all the signatures and everybody opposed, everybody that's opposed out there on Washington Street, and I think that sums it up right there, that we really don't want it there. And most of the reasons come back down to safety from our point of view, and that is from backing in and out of driveways. It's very busy on that street, as we all know. We don't want it any busier. The busier it gets, the likelihood goes up that there's going to be more accidents. You put those lines out there on the road, it's going to encourage bikers to be out there. And I know that's what you want, but at the same time, it's going to increase that traffic, that traffic load out there, which I think is going to be a bad thing for everybody involved. Us trying to get out of our neighborhood to get to wherever we need to go. Safety standpoint, they've mentioned that stats are out there, things like that, and they are out there, that showing reducing lanes, lane width increases safety. You see it, we can go look that up on the web anywhere. But what it doesn't say is that's a painted line on the ground. Why do we have to have a bike lane there and increase traffic? Why can't you just paint a line on the road to increase that safety? Okay? So, we don't want it there, and it's for various reasons. Most of it comes around safety. More cars out there, more bikes out there. It might slow down the traffic a little bit, but then again, we're going to have an increased load of bikes. So, we just don't want that for those reasons. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Amy Harvey, Nancy Marceniac, and Scott Perkey.
Hi, my name is Amy Harvey. I live at 1701 East Washington. I've only been there a few years, but my fiance's been there for a long time. He grew up on that road, moved away a little bit, and then moved back and has been back for 20 years now. My biggest concern is the safety also, simply for the people that not only live on that road, but for the bikers also, because as one person did indicate, that they had almost gotten hit, and I just think that there's just a lot of traffic on that road, and it's going to cause an accident. The priority of resources and the budget and the time should be on the roads, the curbs, and the sidewalks first, personally. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Nancy Marceniac. Again, it looks like it's Scott Perkey, and Wiley is the last name? I'm not sure if that's Mariah, but anyway, go ahead, Nancy, I'm sorry.
Hi. My name is Nancy Marceniac. I live in Bloomington. I see there's some pretty weighty issues on the agenda tonight, and I'd just like to make a few comments. First, I'm going to give you a little personal history, only because it seems relevant, not because I particularly like to share my personal issues with strangers. I'll be 68 years old this fall. I quit school when I was 15, obviously too young, obviously undereducated, obviously with no skills, excuse me. But I learned to work pretty quickly, and I worked for approximately 40 years. For obvious reasons, about 25 of those years were spent in pretty hard-scrapled jobs. Barely adequate wages, no benefits, hard work. I was almost 40 years old when I finally did get into something that gave me an opportunity to acquire some skills. Still hard work, but I loved it. I spent approximately 15 years at two different jobs in marginally related fields. Both jobs were good pay and benefits. But at the age of 40-plus, it seemed a little late to think about owning my own home, so apartments it was. As it turned out, I developed some very serious health problems, which forced me to retire about 10 years too early. So it was just as well I didn't have a mortgage to worry about. Those particular health problems have improved quite a bit, so now I only stiffen and creak in a manner typical that other people will recognize here, I'm sure. Because I entered the workforce too early, young, uneducated, unskilled, and because I left the workforce too soon, the aforementioned health reasons, my retirement income is about I don't know exactly where that puts me on a demographic measure, but I suspect it's somewhere between the middle and upper limits of low income. I know you are considering two affordable and/or senior housing development issues tonight, as well as a TIF district. I'm not qualified to judge any of the specifics of these proposals. The feasibility and ultimate value of these specific proposals requires expertise that I don't have. I would only comment that I agree with the general forward direction of the comprehensive plan. A strong and healthy downtown matters. Strong and healthy neighborhoods matter. Economic development matters. Affordable housing matters. And I'm almost got time. Education, training, job skills, having a job matters.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up, Nancy.
Okay, one real quick plug for good healthcare, especially mental healthcare.
Thank you, Nancy. Scott Perkey. And again, I'm not sure, the last name is Wiley, 1413 Oakland, and then Bruce Meeks.
Thanks for allowing me to speak today. Part of the safety issue on Washington is, and I'll go back to the young lady that spoke first about the traffic and how it slows it down. I would disagree with that. I would invite any Bike Blono member to sit in my front yard, or any front yard, and observe this over a weekend of cars going well over 30 miles an hour. I also advise them to look at the, see at the over-five-ton trucks that frequently go down our street that are not supposed to be going down our street and is never enforced that I have ever seen. Having an over-five-ton truck going by a bicyclist, I would guess, would be fairly dangerous, along with buses, which are allowed to go down those streets. I would also like to point out that, and I'm not sure, but I guess I can ask in the open meeting, that a city vehicle being used for purposes other than city use, I thought was not allowed. Them helping Bike Blono with the safety issues so that they could put the lines down, I didn't think was acceptable. It's taxpayers' money. We are paying for someone to sit there and make sure they are safe. Instead of them, instead of it coming out of their pocket and making sure that their own people were safe. It was on a volunteer basis. I don't feel that a city employee, even though that is his normal shift, should have been anywhere near those bike lanes. It's great that they're there, I'm glad I see it, and it's not acceptable. I also disagree with Bike Blono's procedures as far as how they are going to treat their My neighbor has endured a little bit of criticism because of Bike Blono wanting to put on their website a picture of her house, because she puts a sign there. The criticism that she's going, that she endured for that was not very necessary. To me, it was bullying and intimidation. And I thought that in Bloomington, in our town, not in our town, was acceptable. But obviously, the city of Bloomington doesn't really care. You asked, and you asked, or agreed that that should have been taken off. But as soon as they left this building, not probably an hour later, did they text her, text her and say, "We're not going to do it." So they're either laughing at you, or you don't care. And that's the point that I want to make. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr., oh, see, Wiley? Is that, it's M. Wiley, I can't make out the rest. Martha? 1413 West Oakland. Okay, move forward. Bruce Meeks and Mike McCurdy, and that may be about it.
Good evening, new council. Unfortunately, my alderman's not here tonight, so I'll have to bring up some things I would have rather have gone through that communication channel. On the consent agenda, there's a couple items I'd like to see you poll and have further discussion on. I don't know where you stand, and it's not my business to know where you stand on them. Item H, it's related to taking money, I do believe it was a quarter percent tax increase, sales tax increase, that was earmarked directly to roads, and you're taking that income, that revenue, and you're now spending it to lighting? I'd like to know lighting what? Lighting power consumption? New lights for the lighting plan? Or what? The other item is the adjustment to item K, the adjustment to BPCA and the TIF district situation. I'd like to have that polled, and I'd like to see some walk, talk, and teach on what's going on with that. I think that's fair to ask that. In my mind, I remember $2.4 million of water money that was loaned to the Coliseum that you all wrote off in a budget amendment, so I'm a little conscientious about what's going on here with the TIF district, so please explain that further. And for some of these TIF districts, which, as you all know, I wish we would stop TIF districts, I wish we would put a moratorium on them, I don't think it always brings the best clientele of business owners to this area, and that is not a take on the two business owners that are trying to bring these two projects to fruition. On one of them, I'm concerned about the distance from the food desert on the west side. Are we putting these people in a food desert and dropping them off because of, with the location? What are our real true costs of the development to us for tie-ins and all that? And what are we, what's the timeline for police and fires to those new buildings? Because you are increasing the population, so you're going to probably have some police and fire calls. Has that been worked out, and do we know that yet, before we move forward? I don't believe we need to be giving the Ovation Cinema the ability to have all types of alcohol. Sorry, I missed the liquor commission meeting, but I don't think Citizen Input does very well there anymore. Why are we going to see there next? Are they going to be able to get a tavern license and put some slots in there and some gaming? So, you know, where are we going to draw the line? I thought we drew the line at beer and wine, and now we're going to be going, well, you can shake your head and give me feedback, but that's, you know, that's point of order, you probably shouldn't be doing that. On the situation with Bike Blono, they really went over zealous on their website, and I think you have an appointed person involved in that. I think Bike Blono has become more of a
Okay. Thank you very much.
Obvious than a nonprofit.
Mike McCurdy, and then again, I apologize for those of you who were not able to speak. You could certainly come to other meetings that we have. Go ahead.
Thanks. I'm a founding member of Bike Blono and serve as the organization's current vice president. I'm also the acting chair of the Connect Transit Board of Trustees. Soon you'll have the opportunity to consider approving an amendment to the Bloomington Bicycle Master Plan to include Washington Street. And while the focus right now is from Chrysler to Mercer, we're talking about a bicycle corridor that will stretch from Lee on the west side, past the McLean County Museum of History, on to Green Top Grocery, Bloomington Cycle and Fitness, the David Davis Mansion, all there where there's a trail connection, and on to the east side to St. Joseph Drive, where there are two major employers, a hospital and State Farm Insurance. We're hearing a lot about safety tonight, but the point of this infrastructure is about safety, is to create a safe place for all users of the road. Narrowing the lanes, we'll do that. It's not a matter of opinion. You can believe it or not, but facts are facts. This means all users of the road, motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians will be safer. The amendment will first be considered by the Planning Commission. At that meeting, commissioners will hear from a grandfather who wants slower traffic for his granddaughter who is going to be going to Washington Elementary School, not because she's going to be riding the bike lanes, that would be absurd, but because traffic would be slower around Washington Elementary School. From a woman who used to commute by bike down Washington but who abandoned her desired mode of transportation because she didn't feel safe on Washington, the bike lanes would have remedied that situation for her. From the interim general manager of Connect Transit, they'll hear from this gentleman, Isaac Thorne, about how wide this roadway is and how there's plenty of room for buses and cars and bikes to coexist on this roadway, and how bikes enhance transit. They'll hear from a representative of the Friends of the Constitution Trail, who will talk about how a strong on-street bike network benefits the trail. After all, people who want to bike the trail have to get to the trail. They'll hear from a business owner, a dentist, who bikes down Washington Street to serve his patients, and they'll hear from a homeowner on Washington who bikes that street and has observed slower speeds in front of his house with the temporary lanes. We'll also talk about the sound engineering practices behind the proposal and the fact-based reasoning behind the pop-up temporary lanes on Washington, and more about the benefits of those lanes if they come to fruition, including helping to return this street to its neighborhood character. Bike Blono thinks approving an amendment is important. In fact, we think the council has already moved in this direction with the city's complete streets ordinance, which essentially states the city should examine roadway projects to accommodate all users of the road. So if it's not this phase of Washington, which is 37 feet wide with 18-foot travel lanes, six feet wider than an interstate, and if it's not this stretch, which has a posted speed limit of 30, but because the wide lanes encourage speeds of 40-plus, and if it's not this stretch of road that's near a school, and if it's not this stretch of road where a girl was struck by a pickup truck in 2015, then where is the better road to begin following the city's own complete streets ordinance? Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to move right along to our consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Alderwoman Schmidt?
I'd like to remove item 7F.
7F?
Yes. As in Frank.
Okay. 7F. Are there any other items? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item 7F as in Frank?
I vote.
Okay. Moved by Alderman Black. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by a couple people. Alderwoman Painter. At this point, an aye vote would be in favor of the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item 7F. There, let's see, the motion carries seven to zero. There are no nays to announce, and there is one abstention. Thank you. We can move on to, if I could ask you, Alderwoman Schmidt?
Yes. Sorry, yes, thank you. First of all, I want to go ahead and make a motion to approve this, but I wanted an opportunity to say something about it. So I'll make a motion to approve this as presented to us.
Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Second, motion made by Alderman Schmidt, Alderwoman Schmidt, second made by Alderwoman Painter.
Thank you. I had submitted a question about this and just spoke with Assistant City Manager Rasmussen right before the meeting. I was wondering on a policy level, why when we know it costs us over $22,000 a year to handle the limbs and branches and whatever from the cemetery, that we don't strive towards 100% capturing, recapturing our costs? It looks like we're more at a 50-50%. And while I don't want to sit here on the floor and try to figure this out, I do think that we've agreed that we want to keep our eye on how we handle these kinds of expenses, little expenses become big expenses. So I just want to encourage us, as I think we agreed some time ago, to, maybe to set a, across-the-board policy that we'll try to recoup 100%, and maybe when we have exceptions, we'll make an exception. But at this point, this doesn't quite feel like it gets us to where we have set on a policy level we want to be. So I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none? We're going to go ahead and vote. The motion carries, there are seven ayes, no nays to announce, and one abstention.
Excuse me, Mayor. Why are you at staining, Diana? Are you at conflict of interest on these?
No, I did not have time to, I spent my time preparing for the meeting on a regular agenda and didn't feel that I had the time to prepare adequately for the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. At this point, we're going to go ahead and move on to our public hearing. And the public hearing under 8A is public hearing on annexation agreement, and that is at 102 Greenwood Avenue. And let me, so essentially, the next, this item is a public hearing that is required for an annexation, and it's consisting of approximately 3.12 acres. And in terms of the order, we're going to have a brief presentation by Tom Davinar, our Director of Community Development, and then we'll have a short presentation by the petitioner. After that, we will take a public comment. Again, the public comment on this has to be germane to the project. Each person will have, excuse me, three minutes from which to make their remarks. And if possible, we would urge you not to repeat the testimony of others, as obviously we have a very full agenda. Following public comment, there will be a period when the council can ask questions. The public hearing will then be closed, and there will be time for council discussion before the council makes any action of any sort on this proposed agreement. Mr. Davinar?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is pursuant to the Illinois Municipal Code and the City Code, where prior to adoption of an annexation agreement, a public hearing must be held in front of the city council. And just as a reminder, it's not in the document, but it requires seven affirmative votes to move forward. to move forward. The subject property, as mentioned, is 3.12 acres of vacant land located south of Greenwood Avenue, at the end of Greenwood Avenue, in the unincorporated limits of McLean County. I've gotten a location map up on the screen, and the property itself is highlighted in the yellow. The developer would like to develop a property with 54 multifamily units, 54-unit multifamily buildings of affordable and mixed-income housing. The Bloomington Housing Authority is part of this, reserving 10 units to be used as supportive housing for people with disabilities, and another 10 units to be occupied by residents with an annual income of less than 60% of the average median income for Bloomington. The average median income for a family of four in Bloomington is $79,600. So we're looking at incomes under $47,760, again, for a family of four, varies based on number of people.
And again, just to clarify that, that is for 10 of the units, of the 54 units?
That's for 10 of the units. 10 are set aside for people with disabilities, and 10 for handled through vouchers through Bloomington Housing Authority. The remaining 34 units would be market rate rents. There were a number of hearing, or, excuse me, petitioner did, I lost my place here, shoot. Planning Commission did meet on May 10th, I apologize for that, May 10th, and recommended approval of the annexation agreement by a vote of five to one, with a couple of conditions. Those are shown in your packet and are also mentioned in the following slide. Again, this slide, somebody shows the location, surrounding area, layout of the, proposed layout of the site, and then a typical building that would be on the site. So all, we're here to talk a little bit about process, and all legal notices have been filed according, as required by law. Notices are also sent to people within 500 feet, which is the code here. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on May 10th. Again, all procedures were followed. They did have two conditions that further information be obtained regarding the shuttle provision and transit access, and then an assessment from Bloomington Police Department on any safety concerns they may have. There was additional information then provided in your packets, which I won't review unless you have questions about the shuttle service, the addition of a path to make a connection to the east, pedestrian path, and Bloomington Police Department was officially neutral on the proposal, but did provide a safety heat map, which is in your packets as well. The petitioner does have a fast, it does have a deadline approaching, which is set by the state of Illinois to apply for state tax credits for this, and that's why we have the urgency tonight. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know that there are others who'd like to speak.
Actually, yeah, I think the way that we're doing this is, we're saving the questions until after your presentation, the developers, and the public comment.
Just figured I wasn't clear.
Stay tuned, though.
All right.
Stay close. Okay. And again, we have the brief presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Torian Priestley. I'm the executive vice president for the Benoit Group. Glad to be here today. After, you know, the great presentation by Tom, I'll keep this very brief and really get to the point of why I'm here. One, we have a project that has received preliminary project assessment from the Illinois Housing and Development Authority to develop 54 multifamily units at this particular site. The preliminary project assessment, or the PPA, is, you know, a process that they basically evaluate from opportunity areas, the location of the property, and also through market. So we've been able to do that, and actually, there were two other projects that were submitted under PPA and did not receive the PPA approval. The other thing I would like to mention, the fast approaching date of June 23rd, we have a full application that's going in on that date, and we anticipate after June 23rd to receive allocation from the Illinois Housing Development Authority, hopefully by September of 2017. As Tom mentioned, this is a mixed-income development. We are in partnership with the Housing Authority for 20 of the units on the project. One, I felt that it would be good to partner with the Housing Authority. One, they have an established base here in the city, and also working with a developer to branch out some of the things that they do on a daily basis. In addition, this will be a very new multifamily product in the area. There hasn't been a lot of new multifamily product for that particular area, and we're looking to, you know, meet that demand from that perspective. It also meets the needs of the comprehensive plan for affordable housing. Again, as you mentioned, we're providing housing and new housing up to more what I call market rate standards for individuals that may not be making, you know, $80,000, $90,000, but are working very hard and need very quality housing. And lastly, I would say that this project will provide, you know, new revenue to the city through taxes, permits, utilities. We're not looking for any waivers. We're not asking for any tax exemption. We're coming in as if we're a regular developer and providing a product, but an affordable product that you typically, affordable deals are looking for some type of waiver or tax exemptions or things of that nature to develop their property. So we're not looking for any of that. So from an impact financially, we will contribute to the city. Again, we are coming today to ask for your support. I really believe that this project will win. I've, actually, we're out of Atlanta, but this is my sixth project here in Illinois, and we continue to do work between Champaign, Urbana, North Chicago, and hopefully here in Bloomington. So, thank you very much for your time. Again, you know, we look forward to working with the city and have enjoyed working with the city thus far, and, you know, come to you asking for an approval for this particular project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you, as petitioner, if you'll see, me seated maybe behind Tom Davinar next to him, stay handy. Okay. At this point, do we have people who are interested in speaking and public comment on this project? If you'd please come forward, and is there a place to sign in? Okay. Go ahead, come forward, and if you'll sign in and then just state your name for the record.
My name is Kurt Richardson, and I am the in-house attorney for McLean County Unit School District Number Five and Director of Human Resources. I am here tonight to speak about the impact the proposed development at 102 Greenwood Avenue would have on Cedar Ridge Elementary School in Unit Five. It is my understanding, according to documents provided by the City of Bloomington, that the proposed development will consist of 54 one-, two-, and three-bedroom units in three three-story buildings. 20 of the 54 units will receive project-based rental assistance vouchers, 10 of which will be for supportive housing units, addressing accessibility and other needs for people with disabilities, and the other 10 will be for residents who have 60% of the area median income. These 20 units will be charged rent equal to 30% of their income. The other 34 units will have fixed rents of $744 for a one-bedroom unit, $1,000 for a two-bedroom unit, and $1,096 for a three-bedroom unit. According to the Bloomington Housing Authority, these rents will also be affordable for households earning 60% of the area median income. While I understand the intent of the development is to combine lower-earning households with higher-earning households in an effort to deconcentrate poverty in this area, there are concerns whether this goal will be achievable when located in an area that is next to the highest crime area in the city, and there are access issues to public transportation. If the developer is unsuccessful in leasing the fixed rental units at the proposed amounts, what assurances do we have that the developer won't lower the rental prices in order to lease the units? Cedar Ridge Elementary School, which is currently the zone school for this proposed development, already has the highest free and reduced rate of students of any school in Unit Five. Currently, the rate of free and reduced students at Cedar Ridge is 76%, and if that proposed development happens, it will almost certainly increase that rate to well over 80%, thereby increasing the disparity between Unit Five schools. Along with the increase in poverty comes additional challenges for our students in our school, with additional resources needed to address academic and social-emotional needs. Cedar Ridge, its PTO and Promise Council do an exceptional job with the limited resources they have in providing for the needs of their students, but the proposed development will certainly stretch those resources even further. In a climate where the state owes Unit Five $8.1 million in mandated special education and transportation payments for the school year, and no education budget has been passed for next school year, the proposed development will likely have a negative impact on the school district. Not only will there be a higher demand for the limited resources of the school district, but parents living in the proposed development will have no access to public transportation to Cedar Ridge.
I'm gonna have to ask you to finish up.
Thank you. As you consider your vote on whether to approve the annexation agreement tonight, I strongly encourage you to consider the impact that proposed development would have on Unit Five School District, and more importantly, the students of Cedar Ridge. We appreciate your time in meeting with us.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Thank you. Okay, come forward.
Hi, I'm Jan Meadows, and I'm a retired teacher. I'm in Unit Five, 35 years veteran teacher, and I'm concerned about the students at Cedar Ridge. In retirement, I am maintaining my connection with students, trying to work with students who are under-resourced, and I am the chairperson of the Promise Council currently at Cedar Ridge. So you might wonder what a Promise Council is. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but we are an outgrowth of America's Promise Alliance that started in Washington, DC, and we believe that students in America have five basic rights that we owe our next generation. And these are caring adults, safe places, a healthy start, an effective education, and an opportunity for service to others. So what do we do at Cedar Ridge? We provide mentors through Big Brothers Big Sisters. They're out of money. It's up to us to try and find ways to provide mentors for them. We provide food bags every weekend, sending them home with 60 to 100 families who don't have food for over the weekend. We do this at Cedar Ridge all the time. We also provide them with books for home libraries that have nothing on their shelves. We provide monthly activities to try and show our fifth graders that there are opportunities out there for education that open doors to them. This is what we do at Cedar Ridge. Our concern is, with a 76% poverty, we are barely keeping up with this, and to add more children to that mix really puts pressure on all of the social services and agencies and people trying to help our kids. So please consider adding additional poverty to Cedar Ridge at 76%. We're struggling, and we need a lot of support. Thank you.
Thank you. You just need to sign in, yes.
Just sign in.
Okay. Elton, are you in line? Okay.
My name is Kendra Bull, and I'm a parent at Cedar Ridge, and I am currently serving my second term as PTO President. My concerns are with the proposal for a low-income housing development at 102 Greenwood Avenue near Tracy Drive within the Unit Five Cedar Ridge School District. I see many reasons to delay or completely abandon this idea. The prospect of increasing our student population in our already overcrowded classrooms is daunting and risky. Cedar Ridge has terrifically diverse student population in race, religion, socioeconomic status, and academic ability. However, we have a disproportionately large population of students who are struggling, whether it's in academics, language barriers, discipline, as compared with other schools within our district. The biggest challenge for our teachers is they are simply outnumbered. This development would ultimately increase class sizes and tax our already limited resources. Every child at our school will be affected by this development. I would also like you to be aware that on paper, our class size average may seem moderate at 21. However, this does not take into account our smaller bilingual classes, which skew our numbers considerably. Most of our classrooms range from 25 to 29 students with just one teacher. Add to these already high numbers a diverse student population of 76%, low-income status, bilingual challenges, discipline problems, and a lack of any previous education before even entering our doors, because preschool costs money, and you can imagine the hurdles that our teachers are facing. There are already other neighborhoods under construction that will feed into our school and increase our numbers. We simply don't have the room or the resources to accommodate another new development of this size. As PTO President, I am so grateful to be surrounded by a tight-knit, talented group of parents that keep our organization alive. Each year, we stretch and hope for new families who wish to come and help and give back, and each year, we pretty much have the same 10 families that are willing. I'm not here to gripe about our lack of volunteers, because the ones that we do have are truly amazing, but in a school with over 500 students, we have less than 5% parent involvement. Adding families doesn't automatically increase our volunteers, but it does increase our costs. I have genuine concerns about our expenses increasing, along with an increase in our student population. For example, most schools in our district use their carnival as one of their biggest fundraisers. At Cedar Ridge, we simply hope to break even. In an effort to accommodate our growing low-income population, we reduce the cost to our families by 75%, which also means we make 75% less profit. The downside is that this puts pressure on our other events throughout the year. I fear that if our PTO is further burdened by an increase in our student population without an increase in volunteers and/or financial support, we may not survive. You might be offering these families fresh countertops and clean carpets, but it will come at the expense of their education and safety in a school that is already bursting at the seams. I encourage you to take a second look.
I'm gonna have to ask you to finish. Oh, thank you. All right. Elton Franklin.
My name is Elton Franklin. I live at 508 Patterson Drive here in Bloomington, Illinois. I'm really torn, because what I'm hearing from the teacher and the parents and a responsible official with a liaison organization, doing their part and everything they can to hold things together, to me, it's awesome. I'm serious, it brought, that's one of the reasons I had to kind of clear my throat is that it really brought a measure of emotion to me that I don't ordinarily feel in regards to schools. But it does sound like that they've got issues, and they're facing up to them, which is remarkable, because for all the years that I've been coming here, I haven't seen a responsive city council that has the kind of involvement, the kind of engagement, the kind of...
Elton, you're actually out of order. You have to speak to this.
I am speaking to this.
No, you're talking about the city council, and...
Well, the city council has a bearing on this issue.
All right, finish your comments.
Why is there not be petitioning to you? And I thought there wasn't supposed to be a back and forth.
No, if you're out of order, if you appear to be out of order, then I shut you down. But go ahead.
I see. Well, you shut me down on the first one, when I wanted to talk about the Tiff, so I can understand if you shut me down on this one. To come back to the point, I would hope that the city will recognize that the effort that these folks have been putting in here, the genuine concern and engagement that they have with the people that they work with. It's an admirable example that this council could well learn from. To speak to the issue at hand, I am impressed. A developer who doesn't come in here with their God-blessed handout, that's remarkable. I commend you, sir, and your organization from top to bottom. Unlike the other part that we're hearing about over on Washington, this place is actually coming in with an attitude of, there's a market, we feel that we can service and provide the product that is needed in this area, and we can do that without reaching into the pockets of the citizens of this fair city. It's stunning. I would hope that that's another lesson that this council and the mayor could learn from. You shut them down. Folks, this is representative of the fair city.
Bruce Meeks, you want to talk about this? Okay.
Got a question?
Yes. A reasonable one, I think.
You won't have to remove me out of order, just to give you a forewarning. I would like to see you consider adding a third condition, an assessment from the Bloomington Fire Department on response times related to, I figure it's called, the chief's report. I think that's important to have that done for the benefit of the entire community, along with the developer. I do applaud the developer for not trying to be a TIF district or seeking, as they said, his handout. I'm also concerned, I'm raising concerns, I think we've heard from the veterans of this council, related to the food desert situation. I don't think this is going to really be beneficial to those people living in this area. And of course, you've got the Connect Transit, which I'm sorry, I apologize, I missed that earlier. But I am very concerned about the load on Pepper Ridge. I've had a child attend there years ago. It was, it seemed like the conditions are still the same with the class size. We do this all the time to the school districts, don't we, David? We annex land, and Unit 5 is stuck with the responsibility of taking in the increased population. So maybe a fourth condition would be, impact, further information, impact to Unit 5 might be advisable to talk to them and see what they have to say before you move too much further with this.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else want to speak in the public hearing? All right. At this point, we're going to move to council questions, and then the public hearing will be closed. Council questions and comments. Alderman Bergus.
I have a question for Mr. Deberiner. It seems to be one of the assumptions is that if this were approved or if this were built, it would increase the number of individuals living in the community. Do we know if that is accurate? If this will be increasing the number of people in the community, and of course, the number of people in the school district? Or will this just be providing some of these individuals with an alternative option on where to live?
There may be some increase, but for the most part, we're talking about a change in the quality of housing that existing people who need this housing, you know, has available to them. We see a lot of it as being internal moves, internal to the city.
And as a follow-up, is it accurate that the community, on the whole, suffers from a lack of affordable and safe housing? Or safe and affordable is probably the better way to put it. Safe and affordable housing for low-income individuals. Is that an accurate statement?
Certainly, it's accurate to say that we're lacking quality and modern housing at this income level. I have another point. Maybe it'll come to me.
Okay. Other questions? I wonder if I have one of our petitioner, if you'd come forward? And if you could address some of the concerns that were brought up in public comment?
Sure. One of the first concerns that I noted was public transportation. In most cases, on the multifamily projects that we develop, probably seventy to seventy-five percent of the individuals will have their own vehicles. Secondly, we also presented to mayor and council an example of how to get residents through a pedestrian easement, through an existing pedestrian easement, out to Main Street. That would be something that we would pay for from the developer's side. So we would extend sidewalks from the property, put in fencing, upgrade it, put in sidewalks to expand that, so they can then make it out to Main Street. So that would resolve part of that issue. In addition to that, we propose putting in a shuttle van that would have various hours throughout the day to service basically Monday through Friday, because we have various hours on property management on the weekends. But utilize that for various hours if there was a need for use of the public transportation van to take them to the bus stop or any other areas around the city. A lot of times, what we do on our senior projects, we utilize a shuttle van to take seniors to grocery stores or to other areas. So through our, what we call our service program, we do a lot of those activities. So, public transportation-wise, there is access to connect through an easement, an existing easement that is currently there, and an easement that we would work with the adjacent owner to the south that has the mobile home park, which I've gotten in contact with them, and they would work with us to grant us an easement to connect to the existing sixteen-foot pedestrian and utility easement that leads out to, I think, I always forget the street that then leads to Main Street.
What about the concern about thirty-four units? What if you can't rent them at those rates that you've described? How much are you going to discount them, and is that...
Well, so, on most affordable housing projects, and this is with any type of project, we would, one, market very heavily to find the right residents for the particular project. One concern that I don't have as a developer is, when you bring in new product, that new product at the right rate, it's very hard not to see the infusion of residents into that property. So, we don't look to reduce rents. What that does is, from an operational standpoint, puts us in a worse situation. So we don't want to reduce rents at all, because we want to be able to operate and maintain the property from a landscaping standpoint, from capital improvements that we have to have on the project. So that would not be our goal.
Okay. Alderman Bray, and we'll go around. We'll start with Alderman Bray.
So you made mention of a shuttle van that's to be operated to assist those residents that need it. Is this shuttle van going to be operated and paid for by the Greenwood project? Or is this something that...
Oh, yes. I've already have a shuttle van in my project budget. Again, probably, we would have our maintenance supervisor provide a ride around to Main Street to drop off any residents that needed to use that, and also coordinate other activities throughout the week if they needed to get to a grocery store, if they did not have a car and needed public transportation. But in addition to that, we're looking to provide that easement access where someone, pedestrian-wise, could walk to the Connect Transit stop.
I see. Thank you. Another question. In regards to the annexation activity, and I'm not sure if this is something you, well, you probably know this, there'll be a new sewer that needs to be built. Is this something that's part of your project that you...
That is part of my project cost to bring new sewer down Greenwood Avenue to the property.
And finally, you made mention of some other projects in other areas. Can you share with us a little bit about, is there currently a project that exists that mimics this particular plan?
Sure. We've done projects that range from thirty-six units all the way up to four hundred and fifty units. The project that we, current projects that we've developed in Urbana, it actually is a nine percent, similar to this particular project, it's thirty-six units. It's in partnership with the Housing Authority of Champaign County. We also have a two hundred and fifty-two unit multifamily project with the Housing Authority of Champaign County. And we're currently in development of two hundred and twenty units in North Chicago with the Lake County Housing Authority. And, you know, what I would say to that is, when we came in looking at the site itself, one of the things that we always try to go out and do is partner with, like, a housing authority or with the city. And through that, we want to gain more confidence from the city and also from the community that, hey, we're looking to partner with, and we're not looking to just take away from the city. We're looking to also give back through the, you know, through our partnership. They will receive developer fee out of it. They'll be part of the cash flow and part of the ownership for the project. And so we look to put all that together. And then, oh, I'm sorry, I was going to move on, but I know you may have some more questions. I'm sorry.
So those projects you made mention, can you tell me kind of longevity of some of those and financially how those have turned out?
Oh, yes. The thirty-six unit project was completed in two thousand and thirteen. The two hundred and fifty-two unit project was completed in two thousand and sixteen. And the project in North Chicago, which is two hundred and twenty units, is currently under construction.
Thank you.
And are those split as well? Are some of those market rates, some of those...
Yeah, all of our properties are mixed-income developments.
And what are the ratios?
It depends on...
Is this typical? Roughly ten, ten, thirty-four?
No, no. It depends on the size. So for this particular project, to meet some of the point categories, we did a little higher on the supportive housing side, and we'll be working with a local nonprofit service provider to work with the state referral network for those disabled and/or service need residents. In addition to that, you know, those projects that we've developed so far, they range from having anywhere from ten to twenty special needs units, anywhere from fifty to sixty percent, sixty percent AMI, and then some percentage of project-based voucher on those projects.
Okay. Alderman Townman.
I spoke with the, and I know this is specific to the gentleman here, the co-chairs of Legal and Voters Housing Study. And first of all, you did get high marks concerning the Champaign property from the one lady. Certainly want to see housing for people with disabilities and people with lower incomes. The concerns really are transportation and food. And I know you've got a Monday through Friday van, once an hour, to the bus. I'm just, the clients for the one organization that I talked to, they don't have their own transportation, so they rely on public transportation. So, you know, once an hour van to take them to the Connect Transit, and then what happens if, sorry, Mike, what happens if Connect Transit changes their stops, and the stop is now further away? I mean, so, and it's not just, it's not just getting to the bus, but to work, to doctor's appointments, kids to daycare, shopping. I mean, they're, you know, we're talking about, I know that you mentioned that most of the people in your project that you've done have their own transportation. I'm not saying that that would be the case here.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that it would, you know, I can't predict exactly what that would be. But again, all we were trying to do is make sure we gave multiple options and alternatives. So the first concern was, how does a pedestrian get from the property to connect? We said, hey, let's tie in these easements, be able to give them access to that. In addition to that, we said, hey, why not provide a shuttle van in addition to that? So outside of that, I think I'm kind of in a pickle, in the sense that if something happened to, you know, connect from that standpoint of providing that public transportation. But what we're trying to do is make sure if there's a bus stop there, that we're able to get residents there.
But I come back to, you know, Saturday and Sunday, most, there aren't a whole lot of jobs anymore that are Monday through Friday, nine-to-five jobs. You know, they're three shifts, swing shifts, so...
And that's why we have the pedestrian access. So the pedestrian access...
Yeah, but I'm not going to do that pedestrian access at nine or ten o'clock at night.
Well, but again, property management is not there also. They have specific hours that they're working also. So it's kind of a trade-off where we're trying to work together to say during the hours that property management is there, hey, we can provide this service for the residents, and when they're not, you do have that access to the connect site at Main Street.
No, and I appreciate that. I'm just concerned about the evening, Saturdays, Sundays kind of thing, so, thanks.
Okay. Just to note, we did have one person in public comment who had brought up something that I think Alderman Sage and I and others had expressed, and that is some kind of impact analysis of what impact this would have, and we also, not just on Unit 5, but the community, perhaps even for 911 response times. You have a June twenty-third application deadline with the Illinois Housing Development Authority.
Yes.
But if we were to want more information, you can apply again, right? That's just the deadline that's immediately?
You can apply again, but I will say this, and this is not kind of self-serving. A lot of times, when you get out of these cycles and you don't take the opportunity that you have currently, it puts you in a different situation. What happens each year, they change the QAP requirements. So the next one that comes out, they may say, hey, the area you're located in is not an opportunity area. They change all these other point categories. So now your project scores less than it would than it does now. So to that, I would say, what I would request is, at least if there's other studies that need to be done, that I would love to work with the city on, is at least get the application in and be able to do those studies, because again, there's no guarantee that we will win, but we feel confident that we will. But we have until, you know, now, until September, to work on any other, you know, cooperative efforts with the school system, with the fire department, with anyone else that wants to work with the development. We're open to that. And I think that would be a great approach, is we all look at a way of, let's put together a plan to continue to work together.
Okay. Would, Mr. Jergens, that's a legal question. If we were to do as this gentleman has suggested, do we have until September to pull the plug if the impact studies come back, or that we have an impasse? George?
Mayor, I'm going to ask a question.
Please, while we're getting...
It would seem to me that some of your questions would be better suited when we get to the item on the agenda.
Fair enough. Okay. These are questions that we're getting as part of our public hearing. Let's close it and get to the point of a motion later. Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments from the council? All right. The public hearing is closed. All right. Now, we'll move right along to under number nine A on our regular agenda, administrative review by city council of the zoning board of appeals, denial for a petition of variance at an accessory structure requested at the property at two Briarwood Avenue. And we have a very brief presentation by Mr. Deberiner, and we have budgeted up to about fifteen minutes of council discussion.
Good evening. At the April nineteenth ZBA meeting...
If I could also, and just so you could say for the record, was this a unanimous decision?
The ZBA?
Yes.
I'm sorry. No.
Okay. Just for the record.
Sure. Oh, yeah. I'll get to that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The April nineteenth ZBA meeting, the members considered a petition seeking variances to allow the expansion of an accessory structure at this location. The petitioner is required, is requesting two variances. The first one, that, the first variance is that the city code allows only a maximum gross floor area of one thousand square feet for all accessory structures located within the city limits. Second one is that it prohibits an accessory structure from exceeding the square footage of the principal structure of the house in this case. And the accessory structure that we're looking at would bring the total square footage for accessory structures up to twelve hundred eighty-two square feet. The petitioner's request failed because, after conducting the public hearing, the board voted two in favor, two against, and one member abstaining. And four votes is required, four affirmative votes is required to pass a variance. So the staff had, at that time, recommended against variance, and still does. Be happy to try to answer any questions there.
I'm sorry?
Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Okay. At this point, then, questions?
I have three questions. Number one, I saw in the meeting minutes from that meeting references to the potential for losing a tree that may have some value to the neighborhood. Could you just reiterate what that is and the potential impact there?
Sure. And in fact, I can highlight it right here, because I failed to move through my slides like I thought I was going to. The location of the tree is approximately...
I'm sorry?
Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Okay, at this point then, questions?
I have three questions. Number one, I saw in the meeting minutes from that meeting references to the potential for losing a tree that may have some value to the neighborhood. Could you just reiterate what that is and the potential impact there?
Sure, and in fact, I can highlight it right here, because I failed to move through my slides like I thought I was going to. The location of the tree is approximately shown in the green, and the highlighted area would be the expanded portion of the accessory structure. The house is in the blue. And in fact, if I show you an aerial photograph, you can kind of get a sense of the, of the tree there. And there, there it is. So that is a legacy tree, you know, we don't have a tree ordinance, so that's simply some additional information that was brought up in the testimony at the time. It's a large tree, and there was a concern that, you can see how much of that tree's root system would be potentially harmed by additional expansion of the accessory structure there.
Is there anything that can be done about that? I'm sorry, anything can be done in terms of construction to try to, if the petitioner were willing to do something?
Of course, you do lose the direct drip line benefit. There are things that can be done to construct it to try to help reduce the damage to the amount of the roots, but it's hit and miss. It takes out a pretty good portion of it.
I'm sorry.
When you say legacy tree, what does that mean?
Well, that's, legacy tree is my, my word. Legacy tree would be a tree that has been around for a hundred years, is, you know, really tied to the history of the community or the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, okay. My other two questions, number one, considering a variance, there are five findings of fact that need to be made before the, before the variance should be granted. Based on staff's evaluation, did this particular proposal meet any of those findings of facts in order to obtain a variance?
The standards were included in your packet, and no staff found none of them to meet the requirements.
Okay, and my last question, based on staff's analysis, are there alternatives that the homeowner could pursue that would be compliant with our code and not require a variance?
Oh, certainly, I mean, there are options that did not seem to have been pursued at all, and it would mean a different location, different design, but, but yes, there are location options that are certainly different. It would still require a variance. And so one of the options is to reduce the size.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Hellman.
Thanks. I drove by this over the weekend, and it's, with Linden closed, it was a challenge to find this lovely, lovely home. Tom, there appeared to be a shed at the end of the tree.
Yes.
Okay, that would be, that's where, that would be replaced by the she shed?
Yes, that shed would go away, and in fact, it's hard to see, but some of the current garage area would get skinnied up a little bit, because right now this is in violation back here, and we would bring that, they would bring that forward and bring that closer to compliance.
Closer to compliance, but not in compliance?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Debriner. Any, Alderman Burgess?
Unless someone else wanted to go ahead, okay. I'll go ahead and I guess lead, since this is in my ward, although I think you all know that I, I take a pretty plain reading of the variance request. And so, to me, it is very important, based on my experience on the Zoning Board of Appeals, to make sure that we are clear and we are consistent, we treat all homeowners fairly and the same. And so I place a lot of, a lot of emphasis on those findings of fact, and if it doesn't meet them, to me, I think in order to be fair and treat everyone equally, we can't make, we cannot make exceptions, even though I certainly have never gotten any pleasure out of telling a homeowner no, especially when it, you know, the potential product is, project is one that it would be very attractive. But the reality is, we expect everyone to follow the same rules unless they meet certain criteria to be an exception. And I think that in order for me to be consistent, because this is the position I have taken on a number of items, I think it is important that I do so here as well. I know other people on council have different opinions, but because of that, I believe that it would be that we need to follow the standards that are under code and to, I'm not sure what is that, recommended motion number one would be to uphold, uphold the denial, but others may feel differently, so.
And there's, certainly were some on the ZBA who did as well. Anybody else want to weigh, are you making that a motion, or do we have a motion? Anybody else want to weigh into this?
I can go ahead and make that a motion if that would be appropriate.
Your motion is to do?
To move forward with option one, recommended motion number one.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
Second by Alderman Hellman. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to speak up to the couple that came here to speak about this property. They own this property, they've clearly invested quite a bit of money in this property, and they're willing to invest more money in our community for a cause that I think is very helpful to our community. We're talking about libraries, we're talking about books, we're talking about enhancing the quality of life in our community. And while I do agree, and, you know, I am kind of a law and order kind of person, this calls to my heart, this speaks to my heart, that this is someone who is somewhat newly transplanted here and wants to really invest further in our community. And for that reason, I would like to propose that we take a look at overturning this.
Okay, so you're arguing for that position, okay.
Yeah.
Certainly, there are different philosophies, some are a little more holistic, I think there were a couple on the zoning board that had that. I tend to be a little more holistic probably than Alderman Burgess too. But any of them else want to, we have a motion on the floor, so essentially if you, if people agree with your position, you would vote no on this, and then we'd have a substitute motion. Alderman Black.
Are we sure about that? Where Jeff go? Because we've done these things before.
It's any, it's any, any kind of motion, there's nothing unusual about this, except there are two options. So if the first, if the first motion fails, right, then we go to a second option, yeah, okay?
Okay, I'm going to assume that that's correct.
Yeah, I mean, what, Jeff is right there, Jeff is at, if one motion fails, we... Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure, okay. We have a motion in the second, and let me, just to be clear for the audience, as well as for the city council, any of you that are listening, it's, the motion that was made and seconded would be to support the denial that, of the zoning board, but again, that was a two, two, one, obviously they were split. If that fails, then we can entertain a motion that the ZBA be reversed.
That's right, and just also for the council to keep in mind, to overturn a decision, it does require a two-fold vote.
Right, thank you for the lot of, at this point, we'll see whether or not this motion has majority support, so, an I vote is in favor of the motion, nay would be obviously against nine A one. Oh boy, I get to make, I am, I'm going to go ahead and, okay, what am I doing here? I will vote nay. So the, the motion fails, Madam Clerk, would you, there are four ayes, five nays?
Alderman Painter, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Black, Alderman Bray, and Mayor Renner.
Okay. Now, at this point, excuse me, let me get rid of that off, we can entertain a motion in the reverse direction, but it has to be six to three. Excuse me, yeah, six to three, we need the supermajority, so. Seven? Six, two-thirds, yeah, two-thirds of, not the entire body, okay.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I ask a clarification?
Of course.
From Alderman Bray. I think you said return, did you say option two, or return it to the zoning board for further consideration?
Option two. Thank you.
So you're moving option two?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we consider to, to go for option two, wherein we reverse the denial of the...
And then approve, in the sense of the variance, the petition. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Is there further discussion? Okay, at this point, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So the little bit of the dilemma for me is, is that, that I'm always keenly interested in what the respective aldermen is suggesting. I mean, to me, one of the strengths of the ward system is, is there are people who are keenly knowledgeable about their wards and, and what's appropriate, what's best, what's beneficial, and so I'm respective of Amelia in that regard. But, but I guess, again, for me, that's one of those bedrock principles for me, is to listen to what the alderman says, and so I guess I'm not sure where I'm going to go from here, but we'll go ahead and take the vote, but it's, wanted to share some insight there.
I think though, if I'm not mistaken, I mean, obviously I understand where you're coming from, and I, but, Mr. Jurgens, technically we are supposed to be bound by the evidence that was obtained by the ZBA. Right, which happens to support what Alderman Burgess was suggesting, Alderman Burgess, and then Painter.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, and in this particular instance, I've taken the position I have based on prior votes, and based on my belief on how we should interpret those, those requirements for variance, if not based on any particular specialized knowledge of this area or areas where I think that I would, you know, feel that I had something else to add to it, so I certainly would not expect you to defer to my opinion here if you have a different view of how the variance process should work. But I greatly appreciate the deference you generally show and the appreciation for the ward system.
Alderman Bader.
Well, I feel the same way that Dave does. However, in this situation, it just seems that they're replacing an old shed with something that is new and going to be attractive. I think the tree will probably be fine. I just, I, you know, I think they've got good intentions, and I think that it would not be a detriment to the neighborhood, so, and also, it was such a close vote when it went up to vote before, so, twice. So anyway, that's why I'm going to be voting in favor of this.
Alderman Hellman.
Thank you. So my question is, if, if we, when we vote on the second motion, and it's four to four again, then what happens?
If it's four to four instead?
You have to have six votes, six aldermen have to vote in favor to overturn the decision of the...
No, the question is though, and related to that though, is, I only voted because there was a tie. Am I permitted to vote if there was five?
No, because it requires a two-third vote.
Cool, okay.
So if it, if this also fails, then it's the most, the request...
We sustain the decision of the zoning board.
Okay.
Or...
But it was a tie.
Yeah, well, the effective decision of the zoning board, which is a denial if it's two, two, one.
Okay, all right, thanks.
So it could be like one of those electro college situations. You, you win, but you don't really win. Okay, anything else? All right, at this point, an I vote, oh, would be in favor of the motion made by Alderman Bray, nine A two. This would be if an I vote is in favor of the motion that Alderman Bray has made, which is to support nine A two, the recommendation of, to reverse the decision of the ZBA.
And basically, to grant the homeowner the capability?
To grant the homeowner the capability to improve the property in the way that they have presented, okay, all right. So if everyone will please vote. Okay, well, my question would have mattered, because it, the motion passes five to three, but, but, no, it has more ayes than nays, but it doesn't, it doesn't, I'm sorry, it doesn't pass. It has a majority, but it doesn't pass, and you needed six, and I can't break that, I can't break ties and that's it, or veto stuff. Okay, all right. Thank you very much, and...
Mayor, could I just, maybe it might be helpful for the corporate councils, is, since that didn't pass, what happens to this petition? Is it done, over with? Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure, yeah, there was clarity on that.
Okay. Item nine B, consideration of an ordinance authorizing a redevelopment agreement between the city of Bloomington and JNB Bloomington LP and TIF Bloomington Incorporated for the proposed redevelopment of the former Bloomington Junior High School at five-ten East Washington. We have a very brief presentation by Mr. Hales and Austin Grammar, and then a fifteen-minute council discussion.
Mayor, if I could, let me just first make a few comments. I do want to share with the council that Austin and I had an opportunity to meet with Superintendent Barry Riley of District Eighty-seven, together with two other members of his staff, to discuss this project. It was during that meeting, we had discussion about the moving forward with the establishment of a TIF district. We did receive some feedback from them that they certainly prefer, if there is TIF boundaries that they be limited in scope, much more project oriented, and hence, as we get into that particular portion of this discussion, this certainly kind of meets with that. They did have other concerns about TIFs, the use of possibly tax abatement agreements as opposed to TIF. However, we would still recommend moving ahead with the feasibility study as recommended, that, and even by doing so, we do not create the TIF at this time, that would come later on. But I, I thought it was important that the council do understand that we have been reaching out in our collaboration with District Eighty-seven, and will continue talking to them and bring back to you further information, not only on this project, but others, as you know, that may occur within the District Eighty-seven school boundaries. So with that, let me turn to Austin to kind of focus on these two, next two items, the redevelopment agreement, and then the request for passage of an ordinance to authorize a feasibility study and redevelopment plan for the downtown east TIF district.
And just on that note too, I did speak with Barry Riley today, who said prefers surgical if you're going to do TIF, and not twenty-three years, and this one, you know, we explained was, we're quite limited, so, and we are going to sit down, I offered you two, you and I are going to sit down with him and some of the school board members, and I offered you two, Austin, you know, to clarify some of what we're attempting to do, so.
Well, thank you, David, and thank you, Mayor. This is really a great night in the city of Bloomington. We have two very qualified developers that are coming before us tonight to propose projects in the city that address one of the biggest needs called out in our comprehensive plan, that is to address our shortage of low-income housing. I'd just like to take a moment to pause and just reflect upon that. I've had the great experience to work with Mr. Priestley of the Benoit Group on the Greenwood Avenue project, and I've found him to be a very qualified and capable and professional developer, and I have no doubt that he would be able to bring that project together. I've also had the opportunity over the last few months to work with the Iceberg Development Team on the project that we're going to speak about at this very moment, which is the redevelopment of the former Bloomington High School property at five-ten East Washington Street. And with us tonight from the Iceberg Development Team is Brian Fritz from Pioneer Property Management. He's a part of the firm that will actually manage the property after it has been redeveloped and occupied with tenants, so.
Brian, you want to raise your hand again so the media knows who you are?
The history of this property is detailed at length in the packet, but I would just like to hit on just the most recent history in that the property was marketed for sale for almost over a year by the Mount Maria Christian Church that had owned it and had visions of a great interactive space for a lot of different nonprofits and for their church, but unfortunately, because the building is... But unfortunately, because the building is quite old and needs a lot of upkeep and a lot of maintenance, they were unable to maintain the building, so it was put up for auction. Now, we're fortunate that the Iceberg Group has acquired this property. They're a developer with significant experience in taking on properties such as this. These are interior pictures of the building. As you drive by it on the street, you know, it looks like it's in pretty good shape, but really, a further examination of the basement and the interior areas shows that it is a property in quite a lot of distress. We're fortunate that the Iceberg Group, again, is quite experienced and has the financial resources and wherewithal to take and take on this project and bring it to fruition. They're quite experienced in the development of new construction, senior housing, and do a very good job of that. But they have also recently taken on a very large historic renovation, the Rosenwald Courts Project in the Bronzeville neighborhood on the south side of Chicago. And taking a look at these before and after pictures, I can only hope that we will see the transformation that has taken place in this building at the 510 East Washington Project. These are the conceptual plans that they have put together, showing redeveloping the parking lot that's part of this property in the block to the north, and also reconfiguring the parking on the site, and then including a mix of efficiency in one and two-bedroom units, starting in the lower level. And then there would be commercial spaces on the first floor, and then apartments on the second and third floors, and then a manager suite in the very most upper penthouse space. As we have proposed tonight, a redevelopment agreement that would help the project be financially feasible and viable. The developer has proposed over seventeen million dollar investment in the project. Through analysis by Mike Weber at PGAV, the city's economic development consultant, we have determined that there is a gap in the project, and we have determined that the best way to meet that gap and to fulfill the developer's request for financial incentives in order to make the project financially feasible is to assist the developer through the creation of a tax increment financing district and provide rebates on a pay-as-you-go basis over the life of the TIF district, up to one-point-three million dollars, or eleven-point-eight percent of the TIF-eligible project costs. There's a little bit of a difference there in that not all of the seventeen million dollars of the total project is considered TIF-eligible costs. Some of those costs would include actually the acquisition of the property that's already happened, that sometimes happens after the TIF incentive is put in place. So that's basically a four or five-hundred thousand dollar cost that can't be considered TIF-eligible, some other different marketing fees and developer fees that are not TIF-eligible. So that's why we're really focusing in on a smaller dollar figure and why it's that eleven-point-eight percent of the TIF-eligible cost.
And so, just if you could just clarify for the record, that, so, the developer would not be getting any more than one-point-three million dollars...
That's correct.
That we, that are not, we don't have one dollar of that in our current treasury.
That's correct. That's correct. And the one-point-three million dollar incentive would be sourced from eighty percent of the property tax increment that's generated by the property over the life of the TIF. If it turns out that for some reason that eighty percent doesn't generate one-point-three million, well, that's unfortunate for the developer, but that's the way that the agreement is structured. So again, no other city revenue sources would be tapped in order to fund the one-point-three million dollar TIF incentive. And I'd like to bring this slide up from our past lectures from Dr. Stephen Friedman on the municipal spectrum of financing of risk, being that this is structured to be a pay-as-you-go rebate, only if those revenues materialize. This represents a very low risk for the city, more risk for the developer. But again, because we have a highly experienced and highly capitalized developer, and they're seeking the low-income housing tax credits, which is really the thing that makes this project happen, that's where the equity will be brought into the project and will allow it to be successful under this type of structure. We've also proposed to provide a letter of support to the Illinois Housing Development Authority from the city that's outlined in the agreement. And we've also proposed to assist the developer with what is termed a rental assistance program that will be targeted to four units in the property, and that would be paid for not through the TIF, but out of the city's general fund. Once the project is up and running, we will budget for that accordingly. We've worked with the Bloomington Housing Authority to determine what the costs or the liability the city would be to back such a program as that, and we've estimated that it could be anywhere on the low end of a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars over the whole ten-year period, or up to potentially two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. That rental assistance program is looked upon very favorably by the Illinois Housing Development Authority, and as we've heard earlier, these Lytech credits is a competitive application process, and so by the city partnering with the rental assistance program, we are hopeful that that will assure that the Lytechs are awarded to this project and that it will proceed as quickly and on schedule as possible. One component of the agreement is set out is that the developer will be seeking historic tax credits from the program that's administered by the National Park Service. So we have baked into the agreement a clause that requires the property and the project to be awarded that certification from the National Park Service. Basically, it's kind of our standard of the development of the quality that we're looking for. And of course, the Park Service, in order to award those historic tax credits, will be looking for a very high standard as well. So, be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions of Austin. Alderwoman Schmidt.
First of all, let me say I'm very enthusiastic about the redevelopment of this specific site. I have questions about the way the TIF district is drawn. Is that...
That will be covered under the next item.
Okay, so then I will hold my...
Okay.
Other questions on this? Okay. All right. Now, we don't really have any particular action. We're going to move right along to C.
Well, the motion would be to approve the redevelopment agreement.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the redevelopment agreement. And any more discussion on this? Alderman Black? Or you want to make it?
I was just going to make a motion to approve it.
The redevelopment. Second, okay. Move by Schmidt, second by Black. Any other discussion on this piece? Okay. If we can go ahead and vote on that, please. The motion carries seven to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Okay. All right. Now we move on to item nine C. And this is, where are you going to tell us a little bit more about the boundaries?
Yes. So as you have now approved a redevelopment agreement with Iceberg Development Group for the redevelopment of 510 East Washington, a component of that redevelopment agreement is for the city to create a TIF district that would encompass the 510 East Washington former high school property and its associated parking lot, those two parcels. As you are familiar, as we've created a couple of different TIFs in the city over the last couple of years, the process to create a TIF is quite lengthy. It takes about four to five months. We engage the services of a consultant to prepare a redevelopment plan to study a specific area. We are required to have a public hearing and draft multiple ordinances and incur legal expense to create a TIF district. So staff, and as recommended in the PGAV analysis of the 510 East Washington Street, PGAV recommended to either determine if we're going to do just a project-based TIF, or if we should look for other properties in the neighborhood that would have near-term development or redevelopment potential that could benefit from being included in the boundaries of the proposed TIF district. As we're familiar, the city owns the former Coachman Motel Lot that's in the block to the west. That's also bordered by another vacant lot that was the home of a home that was a feel-good flower shop and had some other uses in the past before that. We also have the City of Refuge Church that's in that lot. I've reached out and met with their pastor and members of their board, and they would be open to potentially partnering with the city in a variety of different ways, through the tools that are available to the city if their property was included in a TIF district. We also have in the block immediately to the south, a number of surface parking lots that are on different parcels. The vacant Chase Bank Building that, at the time this area was being studied for this specific purpose, was on the market. However, that property has recently been purchased by the Wesleyan Church that's immediately to the east of that. And then north of the Coachman Block is a surface parking lot that is owned by State Farm, and I've reached out to them to determine what their potential long-term plans would be for that property and discussed with them the different resources that could be available to the city to partner with State Farm on the potential development of that lot should it be included in a TIF district. So these are the boundaries that staff is recommending that the city council consider, including in this proposed TIF district in order to better leverage the time and resources and expense that we will incur in this process for the 510 East Washington.
And Mayor, if I could, I just want to point out again, it's, probably the wiser move is, is maybe start a little larger in TIF boundaries rather than smaller, and that's because it, as the feasibility study's completed and we get that information, we can always reduce the boundaries, but you can't go back and expand them without starting the process all over. So, and I think it might be helpful, Austin, to point out, if the boundaries were solely limited to the former junior high and their parking lot, wouldn't that be, do you have a pointer by chance?
Yeah, that would just be basically the line right here on McLean Street.
Yeah. So I just wanted to keep that in mind, and again, it's, you know, those boundaries can shrink, but at least would recommend starting with this a little larger, but ultimately the TIF boundaries have to be, what is it, five acres or two and a half?
One-point-five acres is the minimum.
One-point-five acres, okay.
And then just to clarify, and just because somebody, and I don't know if it would apply to this so much, but just because somebody invests in a TIF district doesn't mean their property taxes are frozen, right?
That's correct.
And I talked to Barry about this earlier today. For example, we had the, there's one of the businesses in our current TIF district, at least one, did not comply, and they didn't get anything. So their additional property taxes are not at a TIF fund.
Right. Any increase in property tax that results from investment in a property would go into the TIF fund, which is controlled by the city council. So if the city council wanted to enter into a redevelopment agreement or some type of rebating agreement with the developer, that would have to be a negotiated process, and that agreement would have to be approved by the city council typically before the project even starts. So if the developer were to choose to just go ahead and make that investment without an agreement in place, they would have, would receive no benefit. However, the TIF fund itself and the TIF district would benefit, and then the city could then allocate that money to investing it within the boundaries of the TIF district or declare its surplus for the benefit of all the taxing districts...
And reallocating it, right.
Right, right.
Okay. Questions? Alderwoman Schmidt.
Okay, now, my question.
Okay.
I had two specific ones. First of all, I was interested in the City of Refuge Church being in this and trying to understand how a tax-exempt property like that might benefit from TIF.
Right. Well, as outlined in the PGAV analysis of the 510 East Washington project, that over the twenty-three-year life of the TIF, those two specific parcels of 510 East Washington are expected to generate one-point-six-seven million dollars in property tax increment. Our agreement with Iceberg, the developer, calls for the rebating of one-point-three million dollars over the life of the TIF, eighty percent. So that leaves the other twenty percent in the TIF fund, which would represent about three-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars just from the two high school parcels.
Right.
So that increment could be spent by the city and reinvested in the TIF area, and in the specific case of the City of Refuge Church as a tax-exempt property, they would not generate increment, but they could potentially apply for a grant from the city using that increment for TIF-eligible projects like facade improvements, HVAC improvements, different things like that.
I think of more, even more interest to me is that three sides of this TIF district are bordered by older neighborhoods, and we're in the middle of redoing our zoning. And any of us who live in older neighborhoods know very well how easily the nature and character of that neighborhood can change. So, you know, Demet's Grove looks very different because it's got a big surface lot between Washington and Front Street. Well, it actually has, from Front Street on north, right now doesn't have anything except for the Lafayette. So I guess I'm wondering how a TIF district, as you begin to look, presuming it passes and it passes the study and everything else that has to go through, how do you reconcile those changes that I think may be coming that help, that support the older historic neighborhoods as opposed to what we have now? I mean, how do you market that? How do you, how do you balance that?
Right. Well, the zoning of this area on all these properties, I believe, except for the parking lot of the high school, former high school building, all these parcels are Zone B three. So that zoning sort of controls the development...
But that may not be exactly what it looks like in the future. We don't really know. I mean, I think if Mr. Deberiner might want to speak to this, but I, and it's a question for the future, but it makes me worried about how, how do we...
Well, TIF doesn't change zoning. TIF only just operates within the property tax and the property tax increment. If the city council wanted to pursue some other types of development standards for this specific area or for a larger area, sort of like a zoning overlay or design standards and guidelines, those could be something that could be instituted really at any time, anywhere in the city by going through the regular process to do that, in so much as with the specific block between Washington and Front, if there were to be a developer that proposed some type of development project there and requested assistance from the TIF as part of the negotiation process, staff and city council could work with that developer to say, well, we want this certain style of facade, or we want this certain setback. Developer could say, well, that's going to cost extra if you really want it, you know, can you give me some more incentive through the TIF to help me achieve that? And that can be part of the process of negotiation.
And I ask specifically because I know we are at a moment of change, right, with our zoning code, so...
Tom, did you want...
You have Tom behind you.
Yeah, yeah. Tom, anything you want to add to that?
Well, to your point, we are in the middle of a revision to the zoning ordinance, and the downtown itself, I mean, one of the things that we kind of suffer from with our downtown, if we really want to help build the core of our downtown, we need to define it differently and create transitional areas, and this is something that would fall into a transitional area. So at least staff will be proposing some kind of, as will the consultant, some kind of transition area in this location. To Austin's point, we can make this, if it's, if we're working with one developer or a couple of developers, we can make that into a PED situation where they basically define their own zoning, but it's something that we've all, we all would have agreed to, the city would have agreed to, all of you would have agreed to it. So there are some options there that aren't so time-dependent.
Anything else? Okay. Well, at this point, then, is there a motion to approve this as presented? Moved by Alderman Black, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if you go ahead and vote. Thank you. Eight ayes, no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're going to move right along. And again, we're returning to the topic that was discussed in our public hearing, consider a nine D, consideration of an ordinance approving an annex agreement submitted by Kristen Lee Jones, et cetera, the Benoit Group. And at this point, we have another brief presentation... And at this point, we have another brief presentation and then council discussion.
Mayor and council, it would be the exact same presentation, so if it's okay with you.
Well, then, given the late hour, your poll ratings just went way up. Okay.
I do want to say that, since this agenda was developed and the reports were developed, we do not need the letter of support mentioned in item E.
You do?
So, we do not need item E.
So, we can skip over that, so we're just focused on?
Just go with, focus on the annexation.
I don't need to do anything other than say, announce that I'm removing item E.
That's right.
Okay. So, but on D?
There's no action yet.
Yeah, okay. But on D, we may have some other questions and I believe, did we get an answer?
Yes.
On the question?
I think we have. Tom, do you want to?
The legal answer to the, that I had asked in the, the hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, and have.
And the question would be, if we actually approved this, do we, conditioned on having an impact study, do we have any way to pull the plug on it through September?
What our staff recommendation would be, would be to, to table this contingent upon getting the information that the council desires in the terms of any type of impact study. And we could table this perhaps, we'd like to set a date, no later than, you know, one of the meetings in September. However, if we got that information before then, then we could come back to the council and discuss it at that point in time. I think it would be helpful for the staff and the developer to know exactly what type of information the council is looking for in terms of us coming back and reporting on, so that you can make an informed decision on this. But as opposed to trying to put contingencies within the annexation agreement and speaking with the developer and staff, what we would actually propose is it be tabled and for direction to do that additional information, get that additional information.
And again, the June 23rd deadline is something, again, the project might change the credit, or the, some of the, they may not be able to get it, but that's.
No, well, I think that they would, am I saying something wrong?
No.
Okay, good. No, they'd still be potentially able to get the funding. You know, they'd still be going under the June 23rd deadline. All they would need to show is that the annexation request is being processed and in progress. So eventually, if the council does not approve the annexation, then obviously, you know, the project's not going to go forward. But at this point in time, all we would need is to potentially table this. But again, we would need information on what the council's going to be looking for in terms of when this comes back up again.
And our second full meeting in September would be September 25th. Now, we can make a decision on that before.
That's right.
Okay.
But really, September 25th is pushing it. We don't think it'll take that long, hopefully, to get the information you're looking for.
As I understand, and I'm going to turn to Alderman Sage here in a second, as I understand, we want to know what the impact is going to be, perhaps on Unit 5, so our school districts, we want to know what the impact would be perhaps on connect transit, access to transit, maybe even other infrastructure issues, sewer water drainage, other things like that.
Yeah.
Alderman Sage. And I appreciate that. I'd like to hear from the city manager on some ideas that he would suggest as part of an impact analysis.
Thank you. You know, let me just mention that about eight years ago, for those who were on the council at that time, we did some interesting analysis, evaluation, hired a gentleman by the name of Carson Byss that came in. And basically, what he identified is a, for decades, there was a city public policy to incentivize residential development. And during that time, he was showing how the city had, over time, become a banker, had been, and as residential development took place and especially land was annexed into the city, unfortunately, what was happening in many, many cases, there was a negative cash flow coming into the city, meaning that the costs and the expenditures of the city to cover police and fire service, planning and zoning, and for all the other city services, it was a negative cash flow. The revenue generated by the development was not sufficient, either in property taxes, sales tax to offset that. That was nothing really new. It probably was a little, not necessarily kind of identified here in Bloomington that well. In fact, our recent comprehensive plan, I think, helps give some good examples of some of the, unfortunately, from a sustainability standpoint, the damage some of that past policy decisions has made. In fact, just a quick quote, quote from the comp plan, it says, "The city has recouped approximately 10 percent, or $2 million, of its capital investment of $21 million." And that was in two projects, the Grove, 11 million, Fox Creek, 10 million. So, and this is contained in the third chapter of the comp plan, which is entitled, I think, Fiscal Impact Analysis. There was a reason why that chapter was emphasized and a high priority to put on that, because unfortunately, throughout this nation, more and more local government units are requiring a fiscal impact analysis be done, so at least planning commissions, councils can make better informed decisions on, especially not only looking at the immediate, but the long-term impact of development. It also, as you go back to our comp plan, it talks about that generally, single-family units generate a surplus when you look at cash flow. Commercial and industrial uses generally a surplus. But it, most residential, especially once you get away from higher value, single-family, really generate this negative cash flow. Keep in mind tonight, what we're talking about is an annexation of unincorporated land into the city. And what, because our policy doesn't necessarily require fiscal impact statement, and even if we did have a policy, some cities have usually drawn a line and said, depending upon the size, depending on the type of development, it would impose such a study so that staff could bring that information to the planning commission and on to the council. I believe that, that since this is probably, since I've been here, probably a unique annexation that is proposing a very large mix, as well as, I think, high-density development in a small piece of property. And with that annexation, I think without having that fiscal impact analysis, we are lacking, you know, some important financial information. And I don't necessarily need to rehash for you what we face as a city. You know, we talk about sustainable development, balanced growth, financial stability. I think without that, I think we'll be hampered. Now, I do want to stress, just because a project may have a negative cash flow, doesn't mean that it shouldn't be considered, because there can be other benefits associated with these projects, even though that cash flow is negative per se. But I do think that's important. Furthermore, a fiscal impact analysis really does look at fiscal analysis. Even our comp plan and in this chapter on FIA, and I hope you'll go back and take a review of that, mentions that what is not contained in that chapter is the impact developments to be considered for annexation might have on other entities, such as the school district. And I think tonight, what we've heard is that, I think we're really lacking having some of that miscellaneous impact of, well, how can this potential residential increase have on the Unit 5 School District? So as Mayor, as you were kind of alluding to, some of the impact, I think that, what are the other impacts that this could have on Unit 5 from this housing and on our local school district? In fact, in a recent meeting, we were talking about with Unit 5 Superintendent, other staff members, board members, that going forward, we probably need to have much more communication, discussions with both school districts as we look at not only annexations, but sometimes rezoning of property and make sure that we at least have the factual information evidence as to what is this impact going to have, so that it can be considered by all appropriate parties. I do want to state that as we look to a date certain, such as the end of September, what I can't promise to you right now is how long a fiscal impact analysis would take. We certainly would embark upon that quickly. We would also work with Unit 5 School District and look at that kind of impact. But I think it is important for us, if we truly want to be focused on balanced growth, sustainable development, we've got to start incorporating this type of fiscal analysis. Otherwise, we're lacking critical data that is important to our long-term financial plan. So be happy to answer any other questions.
Okay. So at this point, just to, the last meeting would be September 25th. If we were to entertain a motion to Mr. Jurgens, what would that be? How would we phrase it? And then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sage.
Yeah, I think the motion would be a motion to table the consideration of the annexation agreement until no later than the meeting on September 25th.
25th, pending an impact analysis, fiscal impact analysis to the council. Again, we can bring it more quickly if for some reason this were, the work was completed. Alderman Sage.
Thanks, Mayor. And yeah, and I would be supportive of that, of that, that motion and appreciate, you know, that level of communication amongst staff, amongst the developer, and especially the conversation with Unit 5. I think that's a prudent and appropriate step to take, so that we can fully understand. We want to make the best informed decision we can make. And this allows us to come back and answer some, some much-needed questions that have, haven't been answered before we got to this point. And so I think that's appropriate. So again, I would, I would move that, that we approve that motion as presented.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Second by Alderman Bray. Any further discussion? Seeing none, go ahead and vote, please. Motion carries eight to zero, there are no nays to announce. Madam Clerk, and we move on to our last item for the evening. And it's 9F, consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 2 and 29 of the city code creating a transportation committee. And there is another brief presentation, and again, we have discussed this several times, but we have enough 10-minute council discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to quickly go over what some of the changes that staff has made since the last time we discussed this. Very quickly, we corrected some of the renumbering that was within the ordinance on Section 301, Number 4. We clarified, again, who can place items on the agenda, and specifically, city staff. We did include the community development director on there, because there are certainly times when things come forward from community development, zoning, that type of thing, where we believe that they would need to have that authority to be able to place items on the agenda. The, again, the purpose there is to streamline planning and, the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. We made a change to Section 302. This was the big, the largest portion perhaps of the conversation at the last meeting. And we put a lot more clarification in here regarding that the citizen-initiated type item before the Transportation Commission would come through and be filed with the traffic engineer, they would prepare a petition or the relative information and then decide whether or not that's going to be placed on the agenda. Of course, we do allow that the Transportation Commission, made by a majority vote, direct an issue be placed on a future agenda. So for example, if during the public comment portion of one of these commission meetings, somebody from the public came and said, I, you know, presented this item, the traffic engineer refused to put it on the agenda, the Transportation Commission could by majority vote decide, hey, we do want to, you know, consider this and to have that on the agenda. We added the language in Section 302, Number 4, that nothing therein shall impede the city's ability to act independently to address immediate matters of public safety, as was discussed. We added 302, Number 5, specifically that routine matters that do not involve setting policy, we gave an example such as placement of a handicap parking sign shall continue to be handled directly by staff. Again, the focus of this ordinance being that this is really to address policy-level matters. Section 302, Number 2 was changed, just a slight wording change there that make recommendations regarding matters of transportation being added. And then 303, Section 303, Number 3, we changed complaints to concerns and via the traffic engineer was added. Again, to emphasize the traffic engineer as a point of contact for the commission. So those are just a brief overview of the changes that were made, and staff would be happy to answer any questions that you may have on this.
Questions? Alderman Sage.
Thank you. Jeff, I want to make sure I have some clarity on something, particularly on one of the items that you just mentioned is Section 303, Item 2, Number 2. When it says review and make recommendations, are those, is that part of still embedded in the larger process of proposals or items that are coming up from staff for review? Or is that something that happens kind of on, on its own as, as part of that group?
And I would turn to perhaps Mr. Karch or Mr. Hales to see if they have what their thought process would be on that, on the intent of that.
And here's why I ask that. And I think I said this last time was that we have fundamentally a process that starts foundationally with the staff. And we've clarified that a little bit by, by means of a process that brings staff and into the traffic engineer and so forth on. I want to make sure I have clarity around that, that point there, Number 2.
Thank you, Alderman Sage. How I would view that, at least how I've interpreted that section, and it's good to be able to have this clarity, is this is another venue for us to be able to have that public input. And so if there were changes to be made to the manual of practice, for example, staff is considering that. We are starting to, wanting to work on that. And so that would go through the Transportation Commission and then also through the Planning Commission. That doesn't change our view of the intent of the Planning Commission, so that would add another venue for that. But for matters like the Brick Street Master Plan, that would also fall within the Transportation Commission, Historic Preservation Commission, and the Planning Commission. So there do get to be a lot of public venues for these to be reviewed. But again, as you had stated, a lot of that would be driven through staff to make those presentations for the policy-level consideration.
And how, and I think we talked about this a little bit last time, how does the downtown master plan, I think maybe Alderman Schmidt asked about this, as I recall, is, is, so does, how does this complement or either support or not support the downtown? I'm trying to understand how the transportation plan, the transportation group interacts or functions with any implementation of the downtown master plan.
As the downtown master plan deals with transportation components, that's how we would see this Transportation Commission playing into it. I personally wouldn't see this affecting things like bench locations or, you know, and I'm not saying you're saying that, but more of those, the decorative lights in the downtown, things that are not transportation-related. Yeah, exactly. Correct.
So I want to be sure I'm clear, it is the transportation part of the downtown plan only? Nothing, anything that's not related to transportation, that is not strictly related to transportation? Because I've seen this slippery slope happen from time to time before, how interpretations change after we've had conversations here. So as it relates to the downtown master plan, it would be specifically and only with those transportation items. Is that, is that my correct understanding?
And if I could add, you know, I think that's where we would make a, you know, and I'd probably take a lead role in that, helping make a decision as to, you know, how, yes, that's only what the Transportation Commission would review, look at. But then we could kind of publish that and make sure all the committees, including the council, understand, based on our interpretation, here's how the flow of review is going to go. Then it always kind of gives the council an opportunity to weigh in or maybe suggest, you know, maybe if you have a different opinion, but then it kind of gets into a majority direction back to us. And, and I just might make this comment too. I think in that first six months to 12 months is a critical time period for us to use this to better understand what's the kind of the nominal, the routine matters, what's at a higher level. Questions have even come up now, kind of like yours, and as we talk about examples... Questions have even come up now, kind of like yours, and as we talk about examples, well, which committees is it going to go to? We'll need some of that experience, and we'll share with the council, you know, what we're facing and some of the dilemmas we might get in so that you can, with us, kind of help adjust, you know, to how this commission fits into the review process, not only for staff and the council, but for applicants and the public at large as well. So it'll be a learning experience.
And then finally, I would say, as I sit here, and I haven't fully decided yet, my primary concern is basically twofold. We're going to have a group of political appointees making decisions that impact public safety. And that is, strikes me as rather unique in amongst all the boards and commissions that we have, issues related to zoning and variances and that type of thing. Do not have that, at least from my perspective, and I'm just one, that, that direct line of sight into public safety. And so my concern is, and kind of the, the risk-reward proposition, if you will, that I'm, I'm running in my mind is, is I'm, am I willing to, to, in my mind, risk a situation where we will, I think inevitably, in fairly short order, six months, a year or something, start to see some overreach from, from a group of political appointees impacting public safety. That is, that is probably my primary concern with, with the proposal. And again, let me, let me then wrap up by saying, I very much appreciate the changes that were made and the conversation that we had last time. And, you know, I thank Amelia and Jeff and others for their work in making those changes to, to their ordinance.
And Alderman Sage, if I could just point out one provision in here, because I think, you know, certainly that's something that staff has considered as well. Just a couple of things to point out on that. One is that, you know, we've tried to make very clear in here that this is just going to be a recommending body to that extent. We've also actually included language that says that all recommendations shall be non-mining and made in consideration with applicable law, safety standards, and consideration of the recommendation of the traffic engineer. So it would be very much staff's intent that, you know, we don't want this to turn into kind of a rogue, you know, type of political body that's going to recommend that all speed limits be increased to 70 miles an hour on all city streets. We want to keep this in line with the law as well and make sure that those recommendations come in line with, with those issues as well.
Okay. Alderman Black.
Thank you. And thank you, Jeff, and Jim, and staff for every, all the changes and provisions we've seen over this in the last few months and such. And I know we've gone back and forth, and I think this represents kind of the culmination of a lot of feedback that I thought was really good throughout the process. You know, having been in the council now for just over four years, you know, when I first got on, you know, transportation issues were fewer and far between, but they did happen every so often. And I remember when I first got on, I learned about STACK kind of through some issues, and that's kind of how we did things, that's how business was done. And as time went on, we started to see a couple of these issues flare up in the neighborhoods where you'd have, you know, Fox Creek Road, or you'd have, you know, Hershey, that comes to mind. And during each of those conversations, we all kind of remarked that it would be good to get some way to engage with the public throughout that process. And my fear, as I expressed back then, was I didn't want to have a situation, to Alderman Sage's point, where, well, it should be 40, it should be 30, well, we're comfortable with 35. You know, that is not a good practice to me. And, and, you know, maybe it gets even more wonky, we start talking about, you know, not 20, but 25, 23.5. We don't want that. But I think that there's a value in having an organization that people can, can go to and as part of an institution to give their concerns, be heard, and that recommendation process comes through the council. To me, we're always looking for ways to engage citizens in new and different ways. And this is not only an opportunity to get people to serve on a commission, but it's also the opportunity for residents to talk to a institution, to provide that feedback and that more, that back and forth, which I think is a really good thing for our community. And I'm very pleased that in terms of the recommendation process, I think that that gives us kind of the leeway that if we see something that we don't like or that deviates from what we think is, is the scope, we can adjust or just deny as they move forward. So for me, this is a really good opportunity for our community to be able to get people engaged in these transportation issues. And as we start thinking multimodal, and we start thinking about groups of people who may not always have a car, and I just can't, I can't help but think about the period of time in which I did not have a car and had to go ride my bike everywhere and then take the bus. And I learned and saw a group of people that I didn't know existed because you get in your car and you go from A to B. And whether it's by choice or by circumstance, you know, we represent everybody. And it's incumbent upon us to engage the most people in as many ways as possible. So for me, this is, this is a good starting place. We can tweak as we move forward, and I think that we've spoken to a lot of the concerns that the council has raised. And I'm very much looking forward to voting for this and getting it started.
Okay. We're technically out of time. Do we have quick comments? Or do we need to extend?
Quick.
Okay.
I just had a couple of questions, but first, certainly public safety, as Alderman Sage referred to, and I want to come back to the comment, or the, you bring us back periodically, David. We provide the policy and the strategy, that we provide the what, and then it's staff who should be providing the how. And so I really don't see the need for this. I don't see that we're going to have seven more people engaged, that that'll be about it. I do have two questions, though. Are these, would these be three-year terms like other commissions?
The ordinance thing.
I don't believe it's in there.
It started out, didn't it, you decide to do something like with straddling some of the initial terms?
I mean, it would, but three...
It'd fall back, if it's not specifically in here, it'd fall back to our default provisions in the AC Code, so I believe that is three-year.
And I'm curious what the impact on, on the public work staff would be in terms of meetings and that kind of thing.
There would be agenda preparation similar to what the Planning Commission does have from that standpoint. The one thing I guess I did see out of it was minutes. You know, it does say that the city will offer to help with minutes. I would anticipate on doing something similar to what Ms. Lawson does is, there actually are some contractual services that can be done because I, the traffic engineer will need to be facilitating that meeting, and so we've got to try to find a way to make that happen. So that might be a budgetary issue. We're going to have to see how much that costs, and we might approach in the future. We'll discuss that with the city manager on how to deal with that from a resource perspective. But, but again, providing that staff perspective from a traffic engineer will be that critical component on that day-to-day basis, similar to a city planner. But again, how, the rest of that, we'll have to facilitate and again, go through that process. I was very pleased to see a lot of those changes on the day-to-day type issues. I really think that won't bog down. It'll allow us to still be responsive on some basic issues that we didn't want to see that get bogged down on. That was, that was good progress.
You're still organizing, staff's still organizing STACK right now.
Correct.
It would just be a little different.
But it's not open meetings, actually, so they don't, they're not bound by minutes.
Right. And I think that's, that's the point, yeah.
Currently, we do allow public, you know, we do allow the public to come and speak at STACK. They do get to speak to those issues. So there have been, it's a good important, important to point out, we have made modifications to our process to try to accommodate. But again, this is that next level of more of that formal process in place.
Thanks.
Alderman Burgess.
And I will try to be brief because you all have heard me talk about this before. I think that, I'm glad we took time to change a little bit of the language. I think this is a better ordinance and a better process moving forward, to really ensure that clarity for what I think we all wanted to see, which is an advisory body that serves as, serves as an arm of council. This is not replacing staff's expertise, it's not replacing technical specifications. We are looking at assistance and formality when it comes to those decisions that city council should be making. So if we're qualified to make it, seven laypeople, I think, are certainly qualified to help assist us in that and to ensure that it is a public process that allows for transparency and oversight, which unfortunately has been missing from the STACK process. And, and even if we try to open that up somewhat, there are limitations in what a staff-driven process can do. So following the boards and commissions model, we'll have meeting minutes, if there's any question, people can review them. We'll have, you know, the Open Meetings Act will apply. Public comment will be a given, it'll be a defined time period. All of these things are a continued improvement as we as a city work towards making sure that our residents are engaged in these decisions that will impact their daily lives. So thank you for your work. I, you know, I obviously very much support this and believe that this is a step in the right direction to help us, especially as we deal with some of these bigger picture policy issues that we're getting now engaged in, complete streets, safer streets, multimodal transportation. We have a lot of big issues to take on, and I for one would appreciate the assistance that a board and a commission can present to us. So thank you. Oh, that being said, I guess I will make a motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, motion made by Burgess, second by Black. If there's, I think, our discussion is an end, so go ahead and vote. The motion carries seven to one. Only one nay to announce, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Hallman.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this point, we turn to our city manager. City manager's discussion.
Mayor, just two quick comments. First off, going back to the Evergreen Cemetery matter, I did want to share with council because it, I think there was another question, Karen, you asked about the status of a project that had to do with a user fee policy and the user fee study, things of that nature. Unfortunately, that has been one of those projects. We just haven't been able to move along because of so many other pressing priority projects. That is still a big need, I believe, for the city, but it is one that we continue to look at as we're trying to keep deciding which of the high priorities need to be the highest of the high priorities and, and how we kind of deal with the, you know, the resources to kind of keep moving projects along. So I did want you to know, we haven't forgot it, but it is, again, it's been a challenge moving that along. Secondly, and I don't know if anyone else was going to mention this, but the Jefferson Street Community House, I think we have got information out there, and if Brendan, Brendan is, I think it's Friday from, is it 3 to 7? What's the time for the Jefferson Street open house?
Four.
Four to seven? Is that right? Okay. Just wanted to make sure that that got everyone reminded to please come by and, you know, participate in that. So that's all I had for right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Actually, the only thing that I would have is to, really went to a moving presentation or an event this evening at the Bistro just before we came here and just in, basically, not commemorating, but remembering the one-year-ago event at the Pulse nightclub in Orlando. And it was just about a few days after that that I went to the US Conference of Mayors and Buddy Dyer, who's the mayor of Orlando, was and still is. I'd recommend going to the US Conference of Mayors website and seeing his roughly 25-minute account, because it was fresh in his mind of what he did and how he did it and what happened. Because he first got the call around 2:00 in the morning, and the first thing he did was he calls his son, because his son was a, frequently went to the Pulse nightclub. And he woke his son up and he said, "I'll explain later." He hung up, and he said, "Then I knew I could be mayor," when I knew my son was okay. And he talked about that. So it's a, it's a very, very, you know, interesting recounting of that horrible tragedy and how he handled it. And essentially, one of his lessons was, trust your law enforcement officials, don't second-guess them in a crisis. So anyway, that's the only thing that I have. And I apologize to Mayor Protem Schmidt that I, because I'll be at the US Conference of Mayors, I will need her to preside over the 26th meeting of June.
Really? Okay.
I was going to tell you over lunch tomorrow, but I thought I'd mention, anyway. Okay, that's all. Thank you. Alderman Hallman.
I just wanted to wish you a happy birthday.
Oh, thanks. I'm hanging on to these, not today, it's Friday. That's why I'm not being able to...
I said later this week, yes.
Yeah, later this week. At this point, I'm, I'm trying to hang on to those last few hours of the previous year. No, this is not a significant one. Everyone is a significant one now.
Well, they're all significant, yes. Anyway, happy birthday.
One fit in the graveyard and on a banana peel, in reality, shoving. But anyway, Alderman Schmidt.
The hour's late, so I don't want to belabor this, but I was really struck by the conversation during public comment and the focus on, on bikes. And it continues to remind me that when we adopted complete streets, we keep reminding ourselves that this is a really big culture change for us. And, you know, we heard the gentleman with Greenwood talk about the fact that 70 to 75% of the people are likely to have cars. That means that 25 to 30% of the people don't have cars. And I know Scott knows and referred to this, and I see it all the time. Anybody who's gone to the walk-in bike-out has to see that we have lots of people in this community for whom there are no other options. Yesterday, I was out at the West Side Walmart and saw people waiting at bus stops with their bikes. People are working two or three jobs, and I think it's our obligation to make our streets safe for everybody. We can't, in Bloomington Normal, we have a hard time letting people cross the street when they have a pedestrian crosswalk sign that says they can do that. You know, cars, cars drive where they drive, and it's going to be very, very hard for us to make this transition, but I think it's worth it. And, you know, we, we know it matters because we saw all of that conversation this morning. So, or, I'm sorry, it felt like this morning, at the beginning, at the beginning of our meeting. But, you know, I, I just, it's a, it's a conversation worth having because I think it, it will really enhance the safety of our streets and our sidewalks and kind of provide some equality of access for everybody. So I appreciate all the hard work that's going into this and, you know.
Thank you.
Things come from hard work.
Thanks. Alderman Burgess.
Yeah, I'll just follow up on that because we did receive some comments here this evening on a proposal that will be coming to us eventually, but not yet. So I would just, and I don't want to discuss it now because obviously that wouldn't be appropriate nor timely, but I just hope that we all can reserve judgment until we can, as a council, look at the full information. This is a big proposal that, that affects, I think, is it four wards or five? It goes through either four or five wards, I keep forgetting. I don't know if you picked it up, Scott. Does it pick you up? So it goes through five wards. And this is a really broad project that could affect a lot of individuals. And, and just because we can't respond during public comment, but there was a comment about me having said that my family would not use bike lanes on East Washington, and that is accurate. My four-year-old is not going to ride his tricycle on the street whether or not it has bike lane. But to give it some, some perspective, I, I would, I personally, if I should at some point in my future own a bike, would, would be more than comfortable using it, but I just wanted to give that clarification there. It's going to obviously be a robust conversation. I, it's at the Planning Commission this Wednesday, and so we'll, we'll see how that goes, but it'll be interesting.
Alderman Sage.
Yeah, thanks. And I wasn't going to say anything, but since you talked about public comment and some of these other things, I mean, there was a comment made, and I don't, I don't know how accurate it is, but it, if, if some of the neighbors' houses, pictures of their homes and stuff have been put up on these websites, that does strike me as, that makes me uncomfortable. I think that's inappropriate. And, and if, especially if, if there were people who said those would be taken down and they weren't, to me, that's, that's outrageous. So I, I hope that in terms of trying to move the conversation forward on a, on a more civil and, and positive level, that we can see what, and I think the word intimidation or bullying or something was used, and again, I don't know the specifics, but if that's the case, that needs to change.
I'll give you a little bit of background.
Okay. Thanks. Essentially, it's because there was, it was a political sign that, a sign, yeah. So anyway, but at this point, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Hallman. All in favor, Speaker Vampesangai?
Aye.
opposed? I think this is my second longest council meeting ever.